Good evening, and welcome.
I was going to say, I think we could, um, I think we could do a little more.
All right. Yeah, thanks. Let's try this again, although I appreciate the correction to the agenda. So, again, good evening everyone and welcome to the October 16th meeting of the Ann Arbor City Council. If you're able, please rise and join us for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
We would just pledge the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the role of counsel?
Councilmember Kylosophathy?
Here.
Councilmember Frenzel?
Here.
Councilmember Westphal?
Here.
Councilmember Lumm?
Here.
Councilmember Grand?
Here.
Councilmember Ackerman?
Here.
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Eaton?
Here.
Councilmember Crapel?
Here.
Councilmember Warpawoski?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
We have a quorum.
May the motion please to approve the agenda, moved by Councilmember Crapel, seconded by Councilmember Smith. Discussion of the agenda. All favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda is approved. Do we have any communications today from our city administrator?
Yes, Mayor, we do. There are three items attached under communications from the city administrator. The city administrator's report, memo on the 2017, 2018 snow season preparation, and then the responses to council questions on the agenda. All the things I'm about to mention are included in one of those three documents. From a safety standpoint, October is fire prevention month, and it remains a good time to talk about fire safety in the workplace, as well as fire safety at home. Information on how to protect your family and your coworkers is available on the city's website at A2gov.org. Also, along lines of safety, November 5th marks the conversion from daylight savings to Eastern Standard Time. The one-hour change along with decreased daylight to the oncoming winter means our children will be going to school and coming home in the dark, so we ask that all drivers exercise additional caution during hours of diminished light. Within the memorandum on snow preparedness, I'd like to reassure everybody that city staff is well-prepared for the upcoming winter. Within the memo, there are also some highlights that address some new approaches, including the use of pilot of liquid brine solutions on a pilot basis, providing some designated routes to school, since some of our schools are located in neighborhoods which don't always get priority on snow removal, and enforcement of the winter parking restrictions. I'd like to remind everyone, the public comment period on the train station environmental assessment runs through November 2nd. And on a note from a city clerk, November elections will be held on November 7th. There are two items of note. First, this is the last odd-year council election, as the conversion to four-year terms will be completed. Successful candidates in this year's election will serve three-year terms. Second, this is the first election using the new voting machines that were procured through the county and the state. The new equipment will allow voters to vote privately with touchscreen, audio, and other tools to make ballot marking accessible to all. The Center for Independent Living will host an open house on Friday, October 20th, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at 3941 Research Park Drive, to showcase the new countywide equipment that'll make accessible voting units available for people with disabilities. We are joined this evening by Officer Skylar Verhale and Sergeant Jeff Tabling from the Ann Arbor Police Department, and as always, we appreciate their service to the community. And finally, Halloween is just around the corner, and again, our city urges drivers to be wary of ghosts, goblins, and all forms of small ghouls that'll be on our streets. These creatures often have limited sight and visibility, so be alert and be aware when traversing our neighborhoods on October 31st. And as always, be safe, A2, and go boo.
Thank you. Now, if you could meet me at the podium for introductions with representatives of the Intercooperative Council with respect to the proclamation for Co-op Month. Oh, PFC too, not to ignore, my apologies. Well, you know, we're so fortunate in Ann Arbor to have a wide variety of cooperative businesses. Cooperatives are one of the, you know, the great ways that folks can work together in order to improve themselves, to give themselves, you know, services that they require at a reduced price and with a higher level of humanity. And so, it is my delight to be part of the proclamation for National Co-op. So whereas cooperatives are a unique form of collaborative business, where members own, use, and run their own businesses, not for profit but for the collective good of members, and whereas cooperative businesses are operated according to the Roche-Dell Principles, recognized and used by co-ops throughout the world, which include voluntary and open membership, democratic member control, members' economic participation, autonomy and independence, education, training, and information, cooperation among cooperatives, and concern with the community. And whereas there are 48,000 cooperative businesses in the United States, serving their 120 million members in nearly every sector of the economy, including but not limited to agriculture, finance, childcare, energy, housing, food, education, retail, and more. And whereas there are cooperative businesses throughout Ann Arbor, including but not limited to the Intercooperative Council, the University of Michigan, Forest Hills Cooperative Housing, Arrowood Hills Cooperative Housing, Colonial Square Cooperative, Pine Lake Village Cooperative, Ann Arbor Cooperative Nursery, Stone School Cooperative Nursery, First Union Methodist Cooperative Nursery, University of Michigan Credit Union, Huron River Area Credit Union, and the People's Food Co-op. And whereas October is Co-op Month, first so designated in 1948 by the Minnesota Association of Cooperatives, and celebrated by co-ops throughout the United States, as a time to honor the service to these members and their communities which are provided by cooperative businesses. Now, therefore I, Christopher Taylor, Mayor of Ann Arbor, Michigan, on behalf of the city council and citizens of Ann Arbor, do hereby officially honor the cooperative businesses that comprise our community, and encourage city residents to explore the benefits available through cooperative businesses by proclaiming the month of October as Co-op Month in the city of Ann Arbor.
Thank you. We are so honored to accept this on behalf of the myriad of cooperative organizations within Ann Arbor, and we hope to partner with you in the future to provide affordable housing, education, and the services that everyone needs here in Ann Arbor.
You've got yours already. And now, Ms. Doughty, please come on up. You know, we are so fortunate in Ann Arbor to have, you know, so many nonprofits and great organizations that do so much good throughout the community. And these things don't really happen on their own, they happen through the work of people who dedicate their lives and talents to helping their fellow people. And when one of them decides to turn her attentions elsewhere, although surely towards things that remain good and true, it is useful and proper and a pleasure to honor. And so, this is a...
A lot of "whereas's."
Yeah, that's a lot of "whereas's."
A lot of them.
I'll do a little bit, don't worry. So we are here today, this is a proclamation honoring Dr. Joan Doughty, where she is retiring after 15 years of tireless and visionary leadership as the executive director of the Community Action Network. And whereas Joan developed and promoted CAN's mission of partnering with children, youth, and families for under-resourced Washtenaw County communities to create better lives for themselves and to improve the communities in which they live. And whereas Joan pioneered CAN's summer camps, which are designed to prevent summer loss of learning in a supportive and fun environment, and implemented comprehensive after-school programs, which resulted in a high school graduation rate of 97% for the students served by CAN. And whereas Joan established a Community Action Network as a leader in programs for school-age development. And whereas the programs that CAN developed at its first site, Hecone Community Center, are now also offered at the Bryant, Hecone, and Green Baxter Court Community Centers. And whereas CAN has recently extended its successful programs at Mitchell Elementary in Ann Arbor, Brick Elementary in the Lincoln Schools, and the Arrowood Hills Community Center. And whereas Joan has been an unrelenting and joyous crusader for social justice for young people and families in this community. Now, therefore I, Christopher Taylor, Mayor of Ann Arbor, Michigan, do hereby honor Joan Doughty and proclaim October 16th as Joan Doughty Day in the city of Ann Arbor.
Thank you. A lot of "whereas's," and I have to admit, this is definitely the most fun recognition I've ever received. It's going to sound very cliche, but you who are in leadership positions know very well that when you're in a leadership position, you might have the honor to have some strategic development and some strategy, but nothing happens without good collaborators, fantastic staff, volunteers, community members, and people who trust you. And I have been so fortunate in the last 15 years to have all of those. Notable, the Ann Arbor Housing Commission and the Parks Department have been fantastic. OCED, which is now headed by Andrea Plebick, and of course, yours truly. And I know many of you personally because we've had such close relationships. I also want to mention that none of this happens unless you have the trust of clients and families you serve, and I also want to acknowledge that CAN has been only this successful because of the relationships and the trust that we've enjoyed from the clients that we serve. Thank you for this honor, I really appreciate it. Finally, thank you Mackey for standing by my side for so many years and being there when I needed him, both in my ups and downs, so I want to recognize my husband as well. Thank you.
We now come to public comment reserve time. Public comment reserve time is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to council and the community about matters of municipal interest. To speak at public comment reserve time, one needs to have signed up in advance by contacting our city clerk. Speakers have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time clock. As a matter of courtesy, we may have only one person speaking at a time. Speakers are not authorized to delegate their time to others. And finally, if you require assistance in speaking before council, we'd be delighted to provide it to you. Our first speaker today is Margaret Leary.
Thank you. Margaret Leary, I live at 1056 Newport Road in the 5th Ward proudly. I have researched and written about deer in Ann Arbor since 2011. Thank you very much, council, for studying the deer situation and adopting, two years ago, a multi-year plan for reducing the overabundant deer population. You and staff, led by Tom Crawford and Derek Delacorte, have done a great job garnering praise from the Nature Conservancy and from Cornell University for reducing the number of deer, engaging in a research experiment about sterilizing does, discovering how many deer we have, learning how to restore our natural area habitats, and finally, for using an inclusive, fact-based process for doing all of this. I am here to support the shift of $110,000 into the current year's budget from next year's, in order to cull 250 to 350 deer this year from Wards 1 and 2 primarily. There are now 600 deer there, increased by 150 over the 450 that were there after last year's cull. I support continuing data collection and continuing sterilization in two areas, and probably adding a third. I also support culling on private property, and I offer my own, two and a half acres, a mile from the center of town. Thank you for observing your fiduciary responsibility and using city resources to minimize the annual cost of reducing the threat posed by deer to public health and safety. If you do nothing, the herd doubles every two years. Increasing the future costs of dealing with more deer and increasing many risks to public health and safety. The safety hazard of more deer vehicle collisions, the likelihood of deer tick-borne diseases harming public health, deer damage to natural areas, health hazards of deer poop in yards and natural areas, and deer damage to landscape and property values. Thank you again for sticking to the plan you adopted. Here's a new request. Consider assessing the deer population throughout the city, or at least in the areas adjacent to Wards 1 and 2, such as Ward 5 and Bird Hills Park. In spite of the best effort of the Deer Education Committee, on which I'm happy to serve as a representative of Washtenaw citizens for ecological balance, deer don't honor ward boundaries. My 5th Ward yard near Newport and Westport, one-quarter mile north of Miller, in my yard yesterday, there were two bucks and two does. You know what that means, will happen next year. Nature will give me next summer two to four more, for a total of six or eight. Sorry, I don't want them. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert McGee.
By your resolution, the city was to seek our input. I thought we would be a team and treat with respect and our voice would be heard. That did not happen. We enjoyed meeting with the pro-cull groups, the problem was with the city. Our input was constantly being discarded, and the plan was predetermined. Before their plan to shoot 350 was announced, several of us wrote a letter of protest and refused to participate further. In July, I stood here and told you how one deer was sterilized in Cedar Bend, and three days later, 14 were slaughtered. On three occasions, the city flat-out denied Cedar Bend was even in the sterilization zone. I asked the city to check, they refused and literally laughed at me. Well, here is their map, here is the zone, and here is Cedar Bend in it. Where is the oversight of this program? We were told there were three metrics the city used to decide to shoot up to 350 deer this year. Anywhere, yes, even within a few feet of your home, without your permission, let's look at them. First, the city says they want to reduce deer browse in parks, and to do so, they have to shoot deer in neighborhoods. In a deer management meeting, Dr. Dean Nicola stated, "There are absolutely deer in 100 to 3,800 acre neighborhoods that never wander into city parks." Second metric, according to the MSU survey of 1% of registered voters, the city says they have 75% public approval. That was based on last year's plan. When I asked if they would honor a petition with 80% of the residents in a given area stating they do not want shooting in their neighborhood, and they don't have a problem with deer, the city said no. They would not honor it because they didn't know what we said to get them to sign. Think about that. All of you submitted nominated petitions that were accepted, what's the difference? Third metric is deer accidents. The city says their goal is reduction from 67 to 40. According to police reports on the city's website, in 2016, an officer went to the scene only 49 times. The rest of the reports were called in over the phone, no verification by police. If you are not going to believe petitions from your own residents, why are you going to believe a phone call from someone in Grand Rapids saying they hit a deer in Ann Arbor, but drove home to report it? Out of 49 accidents verified, police, 27 were in the city limits. You're going to kill deer in our neighborhoods because deer are getting hit out on the expressways? That's insane. We're surrounded by farmlands, what did you expect? Here are the types of accidents. No injuries. Out of 27, seven occurred at night in areas of town where there are no streetlights. You have pedestrians being killed in the dark. Save your money and put up some lights, and let's stop the lies and misinformation. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sally Daniels.
Hi, I'm Sally Daniels, and I'm from the 3rd Ward. It's with extreme exasperation that I come before you tonight. At our forum meetings, we urge to treat city council members with respect. After all, hate does not dispel hate, only love dispels hate. In our meetings with the city, we have been told, city council does not have to be transparent. Two years ago, we were stunned to learn that 100 deer were being targeted for the call. Now we learn that number has been increased to 350. When asked why they set the goal for stopping the call, it's 75% citizen satisfaction rate. We were told that they pulled that number out of a hat. When your animal friends are dying because of a number pulled out of a hat, it's very hard to take. Council members have based their vote on their own limited experiences rather than the wishes of their constituents. Deer-eat council member lumps flowers. How many deer does she have to kill to get even? A deer ran on top of council member Kilapasi's car. Will killing 550 more deer make her feel better? Mice got into my car engine several years ago and did $550 worth of damage. I killed no mice in retaliation, nor did I ask the city to kill all of the mice that they could find in the city. Everyone who votes for an increase in the call tonight deserves to be voted off of city council.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kurt Sonnen.
Good evening. I'm Kurt Sonnen, I live in Ward 2. I am a volunteer for NAP, a volunteer in the arboretum, and I also take care of preserve next to my house. I want to thank city council for having the tenacity and foresight to follow through with this deer management plan. I have been involved in all aspects of this. I have been involved in all aspects of the program, and I think the plan that the city has laid out this year is a good one. I support the pulling ahead of funds to allow more calling and to enable the possibility of another sterilization zone. People still question if there are too many deer in the city. The city has done a good job of collecting objective data on this. I'll discuss one metric. Dr. Corto's study in the city's natural areas clearly showed that deer are having a negative impact in the natural areas. This is objective confirmation of what I've seen in the natural areas that I work in. This type of damage is not sustainable, it impacts the whole ecosystem. Deer are the bullies that eat the understory, leaving little for other animals to eat or to live in. The deer, ah, excuse me, the city called almost 100 deer and sterilized over 50 in 2017. Still, the population increased, it went from 450 to 600. Without last year's actions, we'd be at 750 or more. The deer population growth curve is exponential, and we're not keeping up. The city's recommendation for more calling in more areas is the correct approach and result in the least number of deer called overall. The removal of the 450-foot setback is safe. There has never been a calling accident in the United States, and 49 of the 50 states have no setback for calling. New Jersey an exception. Application of the 450-foot rule actually makes calling less safe. It limits the site choices significantly. The setback rule is a radius. If you're sitting up against a house, you can't shoot the house behind you, but the setback rule does not consider that. And that's one of the advantages of not having that setback rule. It's notable that the city's safety manager has been involved in this year's calling, call planning with the zero setback rule. I'll also note that this year, I have found three black-legged ticks in my yard. The back-legged ticks are the ticks that carry Lyme disease. I just sent one in to the state today for confirmation of ID and for confirmation if they have Lyme disease. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker today is Lisa Abrams.
Hi, good evening. You are voting tonight to make the deer program more expensive, more divisive, and more dangerous: Shooting in people's backyards, front yards, anywhere for crying out loud. Urban deer make their homes in 100 to 300 acres, which is less than half a square mile. You are pandering to the pressure of a handful of residents who are well-connected, living in Ward 2. If the deer were bothering a few residents in a low-income neighborhood, would the city be coming to the defense of their yards? In wards 3, 4, and 5, there is over 80% acceptance of deer among those with lawns, according to the city's survey. In Ward 1, there is 65% acceptance of deer. Shooting in people's backyards in secrecy? What have we come to? What have we come to? The city claims public safety is its number-one priority, yet it's placing secrecy and privacy rights of property owners above public safety and the public's right to know where our taxpayer dollars are being used. Ann Arbor is a bellwether for other cities. They are looking to us to see how we address this issue. I've attended Natural Resource Commission meetings, and they want to bring urban bow hunting to our city. This barbarism knows no end. No end. No end in sight. We've already been told that they will maintain 100 deer killing every year after this. Saginaw passed a resolution banning urban bow hunting, and we implore you to do the same. We receive emails all the time saying things like, quote, "It is most disconcerting that our city council patronizingly listens to our articulate pleas and then turns around and does what they want." This deer management program is robbing the vast majority of us to feed the rich in Ward 2. And if you really want to protect plants, like you say you do, then park the bulldozers. Development and gun violence is the real issue here, not the deer. And I would like to corroborate Bob McGee's statement, that the city laughed at him during our meeting when he pressed them on Cedar Bend being in the sterilization zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sabra Sanzora.
I'm Sabra Sanzora, the treasurer of Ann Arbor Non-Lethal Deer Management. I'm here to ask that you reject the city's staff's reckless plans to shoot 350 deer in wards 1 and 2 in people's backyards. Do not vote to fund this outrageous, last-minute plan. First of all, all the premises are false. Tony De Nicola of White Buffalo says deer in the neighborhood do not cause damage in the parks. Those aren't the deer. If they're more than 40 acres away, they don't travel that far. Deer in the neighborhoods also don't cause accidents on the ring roads. Deer in the neighborhoods are on our private property, and the city shouldn't overstep its legal boundaries to resolve a few people's personal complaints. None of the MSU survey questions asked people how they felt about shooting in their backyards, so you don't have any reason to think that this will be tolerated by citizens. If you knew that this was where the deer management plan was headed, how could you take our group's donation for non-lethal methods? If you knew this was where deer management was headed, why didn't you ask in the survey if people are okay with deer being gunned down in their driveways at night, or bullets flying around their homes? I participated in city staff stakeholder meetings until it became clear that I didn't have any voice. Shooting in the neighborhoods was a total surprise ending to a season of bi-weekly meetings. If you approve of shooting in the neighborhoods, I want you to own it proudly, because if you do, my group and all the other anti-co, pro-public-safety groups are united in our plans to immediately start publicly advertising on billboards and magazines to illustrate how each of you voted. We'll make it known if this publicly accountable council puts public safety and property rights on the back burner to appease a tiny special-interest group comprised of just a few individuals. You council members are poised to vote on an extravagant budget line item that would send snipers into private backyards. It will not ask permission to shoot on or across your property if a wounded deer crosses. It will impose the equivalent of martial law to keep you in your house if the armed contractor has to gun down the animal in your driveway. Vote against this plan by refusing to fund it. Show the community that you didn't vote to terrorize your constituents with gunfire in their backyards at night. Show the community that you are prudent, conservative, responsible leaders. A public opinion disaster is in the making if you go in eyes wide open and vote for this budget line item.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Sarah Byers. I live in the 1st Ward. There have been a lot of comments from citizens and some council members of how this deer call issue has divided the city and neighbors, and neighborhoods. I agree with that, but I also see how neighbors and neighborhoods have joined together to voice their concerns about how the call has tainted the image of Ann Arbor known as being a city of love and peace. Sadly, as there are few of these oases left in our country. One instance I have seen of this coming together centers around the apparent death of a deer with three-and-a-half legs that may have taken, that many have taken into their hearts, including myself. I have mentioned her previously in meetings here, and I've always been amazed that she was seven or eight years old, and that she had broken her leg when she was quite young, and then something caused her to actually lose the rest of her leg. I was surprised to see that she was one of the deer in Ward 1 who was sterilized, and when I saw her with her tags, and she's number 50, or was number 50, and a collar, it really concerned me, as she was fragile to begin with, but after the procedure, she looked even more frail and thin. This was in March, and the last time I actually saw her. As I had not seen her all summer, I sent out an email to a large neighborhood group, email group that I belong to, to ask if anyone else had seen her, and no one had. But all those who answered also felt like she had likely died somehow. I was touched by the response, and all those who missed her and were worried about her. This is a good example of how much the deer and other wildlife are an important part of our lives as urban residents together. And I ask you to keep concentrating on more coexistence with our animal neighbors and working on safer remedies to accommodate them. A good example of this is a short YouTube of coexisting with deer in New York City, which is posted on the FAWN, F-A-A-W-N, website. And thank you for listening, and before I finish here, I just want to show you a picture of the deer before, this was in January, before the call. And then this was after she was sterilized, peeking around behind a tree with her two little tags on. And that's it, I'm done. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker today is Christopher Dick.
Thank you and good evening. I'm a biologist from the University of Michigan. I live in the 5th Ward, and even though I'm from the University of Michigan, my views here are my personal views. I'm here to support the amendment that will allocate deer management funds to this year's budget. And as a little bit of background, I became involved in deer management as the director of U M's E S George Reserve, which is located in Livingston County. In 1930, six whitetail deer were introduced to the reserve, and six years later, we had 160 deer. So U M biologists learned about the exponential growth rates of whitetail deer. They also noted that deer overabundance destroyed the forest understory and stopped forest regeneration. In order to maintain ecological balance, U M has periodically culled its deer since the 1940s. Putting budgeted resources into the cull now instead of later makes sense to me. If we are able to reduce Ann Arbor's urban deer population to a more sustainable level, and by sustainable, I mean a deer abundance that permits natural forest regeneration, then this will have an immediate positive impact on our natural areas. The herd reduction will help to stave the spread of ticks that carry diseases such as Lyme disease. Black-legged ticks and Lyme disease have recently been documented in Washtenaw County. Culling the herd can actually help the deer by reducing the spread of deer diseases that may be exacerbated by overabundance. In the past five years, there has been an epizootic hemorrhagic disease outbreak in Rochester Hills, and chronic wasting disease has decimated the deer population near Lansing. Budget-wise, I would like to note that Ann Arbor is something of a model for how effectively deer management can be done. Staten Island, for example, has a deer herd similar in size to ours, but they are spending $3.3 million over a three-year period to reduce their herd. We are spending a fraction of that amount, and in my opinion, the combination of culling and sterilizing some females is much more effective. I'd like to note that an effective cull in one year may preclude having to do a cull in some future years. At the George Reserve, we have not had to cull deer for several years. We have a lush forest understory with diverse herbaceous plants and native tree seedlings, unlike any of Ann Arbor's parks at this time. So I can see no downside to this budget amendment. Thank you for your attention, and thank you for being good stewards of Ann Arbor's natural areas.
Thank you. Our next speaker today is Henry Vanderpluig.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to be speaking about the solar array ordinance, particularly the safety associated with that. As a supporter of Ann Arbor's solar initiative goals, this evening, I'd like to tell you how concerned I am about the lack of safety considerations in the proposed ordinance, which permits ground-mounted solar collectors in front yards of residential, residentially-zoned areas. Having just learned recently the full details of the extreme even lethal hazards presented by ground-mounted solar energy systems, I cannot imagine why our town could even think of allowing them to be installed unfenced and unsecured in residential front yards. Ground-mounted solar arrays are dangerous, they carry the risk of lacerations from panel sharp edges, and their high voltages create a serious risk of electrical shock. Their glass panels also become hot enough to cause burns. And so I must firmly oppose the adoption of the proposed solar ordinance because it completely omits considerations of these known dangers and allows ground-mounted solar energy systems to be installed out in the open in residential front yards. In particular, children from toddlers to teenagers should not be able to access, out of curiosity or for play, these dangerous structures with their high temperatures, sharp edges, and electric voltages. Even if fences fenced and secured, I hope you will agree that these arrays do not belong in Ann Arbor's residential front yards. Front yard or back in residential areas roof-mounted is undoubtedly the safest choice, and front yards the least safe. And so tonight, I respectfully ask our city council members to reject the currently proposed front yard solar ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker today is John Gottfried.
Good evening, my name is John Gottfried. I live in Ward 3, and I also would like to talk with you briefly about the proposed ordinance that's coming before the council to allow electricity-producing solar arrays to be installed in front yards of homes as accessory buildings. How exactly are these accessory buildings? This defies common sense. And how are these structures, however they are classified, appropriate for the front yard of any house, particularly in, particularly in a city with compact residences? Solar arrays produce electrical power at voltage and amperage levels sufficient to produce harmful and even lethal shocks if the equipment is defective, worn, damaged, or has been tampered with. The ordinance does not require even a minimum level of security for these systems. With a maximum height of six feet, they are an incitement to exploration by a curious child. Does it make any sense at all to allow such devices with sharp edges and surfaces that heat in the daytime to temperatures sufficient to burn the skin, to be placed in the front open spaces of homes? These must be restricted to rooftops, and if allowed on the ground, should be allowed only in rear yards where access and risk to public safety can be minimized. The simple truth is that not every available open surface is appropriate for a solar cell and electrical wiring. Allowing these structures to be located in front yards makes even less sense when one weighs the risks against the marginal contributions they can make to moving toward Ann Arbor's renewable energy goals. There is an abundance of flat-open space up high, out of the reach of curious children and animals. Becoming a truly solar city means we have to be smart in our choices. It means changing how property taxes are assessed so rooftop systems don't impose an additional cost on homeowners. It means moving away from dependence on coal-fired power by investing in medium-scale, 5-megawatt solar farms that can power the equivalent of hundreds of Ann Arbor houses. These are rational and appropriate steps to help assure that our children have a healthy future and a green environment which they, in turn, can sustain. Allowing solar electric systems in front yards misplaces our green technology. I urge you to not accept this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there communications today from council?
Yeah. If you'll indulge me, colleagues, I should have brought this up when we were discussing the agenda. I would hope that we could amend the agenda to add, to see for, the medical marijuana licensing ordinance to take that off the table. ordinance, to take that off the table. It was not in...
Let's see, three.
C three in my packet is not that.
Oh.
Sorry, I was looking at the one online, which has C three of something else. My apologies.
We can certainly have to take it off the table now and leave it in there. I was planning on doing that in the moment, but the motion's been made. Is there a second?
Let's just do it in the morning.
Should we just do it in the ordinary course?
Fair enough.
All right, we'll do it in the ordinary course. You still have the floor, Councilmember Smith.
That's all I needed.
Further communication from council. Councilmember Ackerman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As an accompanying update from Planning Commission, tomorrow, the Planning Commission will be examining the new zoning language for medical marijuana, and it is the hope of my colleague, Councilmember Smith, that we can have the conversation of both the use regulations as well as the zoning regulations all in one go to have a full picture of the extent and scope of the new laws. So that should be coming forward in hopefully short order. We've had a very robust conversation about it. Additionally, I won't be pulling it, but I would love to point to the consent agenda and mark that we will hopefully be voting in favor to support coordinated funding. Coordinated funding is how we do human services here in Ann Arbor, and it's how organizations like Community Action Network, which we honored this evening, get a lot of funding. We alongside partners at the county, the urban county, St. Joe's, United Way, the Ann Arbor Area Community Foundation, and they're becoming more and more partners every year, so it's harder to list them. I'll pool their money to the tune of millions of dollars. I think 5.8 was the last item I saw. And then through a series of grant applications, go out that, those dollars. So you see terrific nonprofits in this community getting access to dollars that they may not with this just allocated from the city or from the county or from United Way. And also reduces redundancies in the funding to nonprofits to ensure we're getting the most out of our tax dollars when it comes to delivering human services. So hopefully, this moves forward. Very proud of it, as always.
Further discussion, pardon me, further communication from council. Councilmember Eaton.
Thank you. I have two things. First, I want to discuss Packard Square. As you know, the lender who financed Packard Square project was taken into foreclosure. The court appointed a receiver to oversee the project and complete it, and that receiver was McKinley Company. In kind of a last-ditch effort to save his project, the original developer filed for bankruptcy about a month ago. And that posed the threat of delaying the project even longer than it's already been delayed. All of the work crews were removed from the site, and they were all waiting for the bankruptcy court to make a decision. On Friday, the bankruptcy court dismissed the bankruptcy claims, returning the matter to the state court, which will hopefully put McKinley back on the project, and we'll probably see some progress soon. So I think this is fairly good news that the bankruptcy court decided this so quickly, dispensed with the claims, and ordered anyone that has an interest in that property not to file a bankruptcy proceeding for the next two years. So that should give McKinley enough time to complete this project. This is just great news for that neighborhood, who has suffered this project for some time In a second matter, at our last meeting on October 2nd, we passed a resolution in support of the Safe Routes to School grant application. And after we passed that, I was disappointed to learn that the materials that city staff needed to supply in support of that grant application weren't submitted in a timely fashion, and that's going to delay the processing of that grant until the next round of grants. I can't express how disappointed I am. The Safe Routes to School group is a volunteer group that just puts in a lot of hours and has been successful at finding us for funding for pedestrian safety around schools. It's my understanding that in the public services area, there's currently a vacancy, and I have written to the city administrator to urge him to fill that vacancy with an additional transportation engineer. These matters of school safety and pedestrian safety are so urgent that we really can't afford to let any of these things fall through the cracks. Right now, there's a delay on this particular project. There's been a delay on the installation of changeable speed limit signs around Huron High School. There's been a delay on the receipt of RFBs for the area around Greenview and Sio and Greenview and Stadium. We need to move forward on these issues. Our residents expect us to address our safety issues in a more expedient manner. So I hope that we will fill that current vacancy with a transportation engineer rather than, excuse me, mobility expert or a transportation planner. We need the expertise of an engineer, and I urge the position to be filled with that sort of professional. Thank you.
Further communication from council. Councilmember Westphal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two items as well. One, I just was hoping to get some clarification, if possible, on the spot from staff regarding a couple of assertions that were made at Public Comment, both last meeting and this meeting, about the potential of contractors shooting bullets across properties without the residents' permission. Has this ever been contemplated?
Without wishing to intrude upon your communications, perhaps this is...
Should wait for the agenda?
Let's do it.
I wasn't going to pull it, but...
My suspicion is someone might.
Okay. I'll put those on hold.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know some people make comments and then leave, so I wanted to make sure that they were privy to the response. But the second, piggybacks on what has already been brought up, having to do with safety around schools. And, you know, I think, I speak for all of us, that the thing we fear most when we open up our inbox or read the newspaper is a report of somebody being harmed in the community. And granted, a lot of these harms are not visible to many of us, and those are just as tragic, but what I'm referring to is the incident last week near Huron High School, where a car reportedly passed a school bus that had stopped for someone crossing and was struck. And thankfully, the student is recovering from minor injuries. I really appreciate that we're making strides in terms of signals like RFBs and standardizing crosswalk design. And over the past several years, when roads have been constructed, we've made positive changes to how they're designed. Now we have the Transportation Commission up and running, and we're shifting some priorities appropriately, like enforcement, which I think are all positive movements. But we're simply just not moving fast enough, in my opinion. We absolutely need enforcement, but as has been well documented, it's nearly impossible to regulate speeds solely through police. If a road is designed like a freeway, people drive at freeway speeds. We know speed kills, and the data is very clear that four-lane roads are far more dangerous than narrower roads. And if we're going to make the road safer, we have to sacrifice some speed. So in the next couple of weeks, I'll be speaking with staff further in our Transportation Commission liaison about what they need to deliver some updated data and recommendations on speed and road design changes that would be relatively inexpensive to implement. I'll be bringing a resolution next meeting to request support for a deadline on these recommendations. And I think it was, we can all acknowledge that it was just a matter of luck that this recent crash resulted in an injury instead of tragedy, so I would just ask that everyone consider how this conversation would have proceeded with a different context. Thanks.
Councilmember Wapahowski.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Following on Councilmember Westphal's commentary, I want to remind people that although the tragedy of crashes doesn't happen every day, there are tragedies that require assistance every day, and so I'm going to remind my colleagues of the upcoming blood battle between the city council and the Board of Commissioners. The Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners is having a blood drive on October 20th, this upcoming Friday. People can sign up at redcrossblood.org. I know that some of us on council are unable to give for ineligible under the Red Cross rules. If that fits you, you can find a substitute to fill your place. If that Friday doesn't work for you, you're able to participate on another day by the end of this month. So I'm going to encourage you again to please sign up. I've heard from some of you that have told me you're signed up and planning on giving, and so thank you very much. And I hope others in the community will join us in this effort. In addition, I want to thank my colleagues who joined me in taking a knee during the Pledge of Allegiance today. When I grew up, I was taught to, when it's time to say my prayers, to kneel down. When I was in football, when my coach wanted me to listen, or the team to listen, he'd tell us to take a knee. Or if somebody was hurt on the field and we wanted to pay attention and to give that situation respect, as we hoped, and for some of us prayed that the injury wasn't too severe, we would take a knee. People will argue that that position is a position of disrespect. For me, it is a position of great respect. And so for my part, taking a knee today was a chance to give attention and hope and prayer that the words of our Pledge of Allegiance, liberty and justice for all, would be fulfilled. They are beautiful sentiment, they are beautiful aspiration, and they are an ongoing call for us to keep doing our work more forcefully. Later in the agenda, we will be dealing with a resolution to amend our council calendar to have an additional work session to deal with the proposed, the recommendations by the police audit from Hilary Heinz. This is the work that we're called to do, and this is the work that we must be keeping our focus on to keep the words of the pledge and the commitment to liberty and justice for all in the front of our mind. Thank you.
Councilmember Lum.
Just first, thank you, Councilmember Wapahowski, for encouraging us to participate in the blood drive. I appreciate the reminder, and I hope we can be the, because you've issued it as a challenge to the County Board of Commissioners, so thank you for getting us all involved in that good cause. To my Ward Two council colleague, comments about looking at Huron Parkway specifically, I would just note to all of you that I think some of you are aware, perhaps all, when we received the update about the accident on Huron Parkway, and again, thankfully, the young lady is okay. From Mr. Lazarus, the update, I did share, and I think I copied all of you on that email, that I arrived at the, I was traveling that direction shortly after the accident occurred. And I do think that, I've been a bit of a broken record about this, that increased enforcement there, and I've heard both prior to and subsequent to the accident, I've heard from countless residents, many of whom have children who walk or bike to Huron High School, that increased enforcement at the time the students arrive and when school closes, both on Huron Parkway and Fuller, is wanted and would be a big safety improvement. Additionally, the traffic does travel at greater speeds, but I will also just note that the traffic there is significant, and that area is growing tremendously, as we all know. The morning of the accident, the traffic was backed up, the point of the accident way south over the Huron Parkway Bridge. And that's what happens when you would narrow that section of road to one lane. So I guess I'm advocating that we used other tools, like enforcement, and I know we're all looking forward to seeing those as soon as possible, those speed electronic changeable speed reader signs installed. And I do appreciate that the administrator is following up on that as well, because I think that would clearly also improve safety there. Thank you.
Further communication. Councilmember Klesopoffi.
Following on after Councilmember Chuck Wapahowski, for me, taking the knee is also showing solidarity with the different groups of people who have been doing that at a national level. For me, flags and the Pledge of Allegiance are symbols. That's okay. For me, they are symbols. But for me, democracy is more than just symbolic. It's actually upholding democratic practices, whether we demand for checks and balances or transparency or accountability. So for me, I would want others to judge my patriotism by those, my actions, when I uphold these values. I think that's what this country is all about, and I'm proud to do that. So I hope you understand. Thank you.
Further communication from council. I'd like to request confirmation of the following nominations that were presented to city council at the October 2nd, 2017 regular session. To the Energy Commission, Charlotte Jamison. To the Historic District Commission, Jessica Quinaro. You have a motion, please. Moved by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Creepel. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is approved. I'd like also to recommend the following nomination for your consideration to the Housing and Human Services Advisory Board, Nora Wright. We now have before us the Consent Agenda. May I have a motion, please, to approve the Consent Agenda? Moved by Councilmember Eaton, seconded by Councilmember Lum. Discussion of the Consent Agenda. Councilmember Smith.
Yes, I would like to pull CA 11 for the purpose of having my esteemed colleagues vote to recuse me from that. There's an issue with council ethics rule number four, where I can ask for my colleagues to vote to excuse me for a matter that creates a situation with conflicting duties. I work for the firm that is under that contract that's on the table. I don't work in that division of the firm. I don't work in the office that's performing the work, but nevertheless, I am an employee of the firm and therefore would like to pull that so that you all can vote to recuse me or not.
So we'll put that to DC four.
Thank you.
I'd be grateful if someone, too, would remove, please, CA 16. So CA 16, I move to DC five. I put it at DC for council.
Yeah.
Further discussion of the Consent Agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The Consent Agenda, with the exception of CA 16 and CA 11, is approved. With 11 council members present, all voting in the affirmative, thus satisfying the eight-vote requirement with respect to CA one, CA two, CA three, CA four, CA five, CA six, CA eight, CA 13. We now come to a public hearing. Public hearings are opportunities for members of the public to speak to council and the community about specific matters on the agenda. To speak at a public hearing, one need not have signed up in advance, but your speech must relate to the specific subject matter of the public hearing. Speakers will have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time clock. As a matter of courtesy, we may have only one person speaking at a time. And finally, if you require assistance in speaking before council, we'd be delighted to... if you require assistance in speaking before council, we'd be delighted to provide it to you. Public hearing number one. Resolution to approve DTE State Street Utility Substation Plan Project Site Plan at 2551 South State Street. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this public hearing? Please just write on up.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor and councilmembers. My name is Dan Breaker. I'm the Platform General Manager for DTE Energy, responsible for the projects in Ann Arbor, and I am pleased to be here today to represent the company. We are going to be investing millions of dollars to improve the power quality in the Ann Arbor area over the next few years, and today we're here to answer any questions that the council or community has around our expansion and upgrade of our state substation, which is at 2551 South State Street. So be happy to answer questions when that time comes. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. We have before us the regular session meeting minutes of October 2nd, 2017. May I have a motion, please, to approve the minutes? Moved by Councilmember Frenzel, seconded by Councilmember Ackerman. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes are approved. CA 1, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Ann Arbor by repeal of Chapter 15, Emergency and Disaster Management Title I of the code, and adding a new Chapter 15, Emergency and Disaster Management Title I of said code. Moved by Councilmember Ackerman, seconded by Councilmember Westfall. Discussion, please, of C1. All in favor? Councilmember Grant.
See, I appreciate it, our work session. Last week, it really, the depth and breadth of what went on behind the scenes and helping us understand. Our own roles in the process was really educational for me, and I appreciate better understanding my own responsibilities. So, thank you.
You're here. Councilmember Lum.
It was outstanding, so thank you for that acknowledgement of staff's great work. Councilmember Grant. Also, I guess just one follow-up question. As you know, it was brought to my attention that, well, it wasn't clear to me if we had engaged folks like from the Center for Independent Living or the Disability Commission in, when we were developing the plan, and if someone could just speak to that, because I fielded some questions about that, that would be appreciated.
Councilmember, in response to your question, I think what I took away from that discussion last week was the need to ensure that we are aware of residents throughout the community with special needs and incorporate those into our planning documents, and I can assure you, as we go from governance documents to execution plans, we'll address that concern.
Excellent. Thank you.
Further discussion of C1. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is approved. C2, an ordinance to amend the Chapter 55 zoning ordinance of Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor to add Section 583 Solar Energy Systems. Moved by Councilmember Ackerman, seconded by Councilmember Grant. Discussion of C2. Councilmember Ackerman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a fairly specific and nuanced piece of our zoning code. Back in April of this year, residents from the Third Ward and the Patton-Gill neighborhood alerted Councilmember Grant, Mayor Taylor, and I to a petition to build a ground-mounted solar array in a neighbor's front yard. It sparked an interesting set of philosophical quandaries about the appropriateness, safety concerns, as well as kind of highlighted a bizarre piece of our zoning that I think deserves more attention. As written currently, there are two forms of front yards in our zoning code, a required front yard and a front yard. For front yards that have a depth greater than 40 feet, from the front lot line or the right-of-way to the 40-foot line, is called your required front yard, and it acts like you would expect. From 40-foot line to the home, there is just the front yard, in which accessory structures can be built. And I'll quickly read the definition of an accessory building, because it's fairly vague and, in my mind, a little bit overly permissive. An accessory building is a subordinate structure, whether attached or detached, on the same lot as the principal building. So like I said, fairly permissive, fairly vague. And examples that are listed on the city's website include everything from a garage to a carport to an above-ground pool. And so considering that we have a number of front yards in residential areas with a depth greater than 40 feet, and the fact that any accessory building, so long as it's, you know, contained within 35% of the square footage, can be built, and can be built to the height of 21 feet. So you, in a given residential neighborhood, you could see a 21-foot garage built in front of a residential home. As this was brought to our attention, we passed a moratorium that would prohibit, you know, passing permits for these types of ground-mounted solar arrays, as staff had been interpreting accessory structures to include these ground-mounted solar arrays, something that was obviously not thought of at the time of writing the code. Staff put forward an initial recommendation that simply struck one word from our ordinance, which anyone who's dealt with zoning code is a really awesome thing, if you can strike one word and get away with it. Unfortunately, staff couldn't get away with it, and the Planning Commission moved in direction, instead of looking at accessory structures as a whole, instead singling out ground-mounted solar arrays and trying to put in-place regulations that would allow these systems in a way that would comply with the character of how we envision our residential areas. The Planning Commission also met with the Energy Commission, and we hashed out more or less what is before you tonight. I will say that I have my own biases and input from my constituents, and do believe that accessory structures as a whole need to be examined. I think they are too permissive, and when you think about what a subordinate structure is, it's not a 21-foot garage in front of a house. The regulations, as they're written now, say that setbacks for these systems have to be 40 feet from the front lot line, three feet from the adjacent property line. They have a maximum height of six feet. Screening can be done by fencing wall, evergreen vegetation, berm, or a combination thereof, and have to be 80% opaque, 50% opaque if vegetation went planted. And again, have to, can only cover 35% of that front yard, not the required front yard. As we talk about yards with a depth greater than 40 feet, these are fairly large properties, so 35% could be in a case on one of my constituents' roads who reported, you know, up to 6,000 square feet of solar panels in a front yard. And then there are another, you know, layers of issues on top of it. People spoke of safety concerns. While the screening is, you know, helpful from an aesthetic perspective, if you're still comfortable with a six-foot wall in someone's front yard, they don't deal with safety concerns. There's no safety fencing. They don't deal with issues from a fire safety perspective, like what do you do with drainage underneath these systems? What do you, and nor do they deal with issues like vandalism. And so I think there's a lot more that needs to go into this, if this is the direction that council wants to go. I still think that we need to discuss accessory structures as a whole. I think it's something that is an oversight and can allow for some things that are not intended. And I will ask some process questions about how we can move in that direction at the end of this discussion, but interested to hear other colleagues' thoughts. I think ultimately, we would probably want to gather some feedback and hopefully postpone this, allowing staff to incorporate some of the important things that residents have mentioned, but also interested if council isn't exploring accessory structures as a whole, because I think it's something worthwhile.
Further discussion? Councilmember Kalasopathy.
Can we have a staff member to answer our questions?
Is Mr. Leonard here?
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Both the residents who spoke at the public commentary, plus the emails that we have been getting, are regarding safety concerns, and as one of you mentioned, that the foliage is more for aesthetics, to cover the structure. So what about kids who are running around and playing, like, this doesn't prevent safety issues, right? Somebody touching a very hot panel or getting electrocuted? Because it's not sufficient to provide the barrier in terms of somebody unintentionally touching it, right?
Yeah, the proposed screening is not intended to control access to the panels. I would say that you'll note in the ordinance that all panels would have to be installed according to the manufacturer's specifications. They would receive the necessary building and/or electrical permits to ensure that they're installed safely, but the, while they're, and, but, clearly, the screening is intended to be more of an aesthetic screen than to control access to the panels. I think, while not absolute for sure, the fact that it would have to be, at the closest it could be, to the property, front property line, would be 40 feet, I don't think that the concern necessarily for people walking by on the sidewalk, for general, for like, sort of general public access is as much of a concern. And I'm not an expert on the sort of temperature generated by the panels themselves, so that's not something that came up either with the Planning Commission or the Energy Commission in considering the proposed ordinance.
I'm also wondering whether, if we have this kind of an ordinance on the books, whether the insurance rates would be going up for homeowners, because there isn't, it's like having a pool with no gates, right? So it's not just somebody walking, I mean, somebody, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know what the, why a typical homeowner's insurance policy would change in a rate if you install a solar system, either in your rear yard or your front yard, but I'm sure that that would be something that a property owner would want to ensure before they chose to make that installation.
Councilmember, if you, just a quick, also clarification, is that the screening itself is only required for the rear and back of the array, the panels themselves would not be screened, and that back and rear screening is only relevant when visible from the public right-of-way. So the panels themselves would not have any fencing?
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Kalasopathy, you still on the floor? Oh, my apologies. Councilmember Lum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For, I share many of the concerns that Councilmember Ackerman so well articulated, and some of our speakers tonight also addressed, and I don't think we're near ready to vote on this ordinance. I too think that we need to look at accessory structures as a whole, and that, frankly, it's, the language in the zoning regulating accessory structures is too permissive. So I'll wait to see what other people have to say at this point, but if it looks like others are more comfortable with this, I'll be moving to postpone this first reading until the level of community awareness and understanding is much, much higher than it is now. I, so I won't move this now, I'll wait, again, depending on whatever council's pleasure is, and I would also then look to staff for a recommendation on how to postpone, how long to postpone this. So as, again, Councilmember Ackerman so well described, we're, yeah, this has to do with, and impacts the front yards of single-family neighborhoods, and when we're talking about the front yards of single-family neighborhoods, the level of community interest is understandably very high. Folks care about the character and the aesthetics of their neighborhoods, and that is certainly reasonable. And when we add the potential safety concerns to the mix, the level of interest and concern only gets more intense, and that's very reasonable as well. We had a similar situation on accessory dwelling units in front yards, and although I don't think the amount of community education and engagement was sufficient then with ADUs, it was substantially more than what this solar ray ordinance has had, which is essentially zero. For ADUs, there were education and input sessions held across the city, one large citywide session, and a number of neighborhood meetings as well, and I attended a number of those. By comparison, for the solar ray ordinance, there was one relatively small Third Ward Neighborhood meeting last week, and I appreciate that Councilmember Ackerman and Councilmember Grant and their neighbors coordinated that and organized it, and there's been nothing else. That's just not adequate public education or engagement, or the way we should be setting policy, particularly policy that could significantly impact residential neighborhoods. Up until recently, I wasn't aware of the, fully aware of the safety concerns. Neighbors need to know how the city will ensure there is no safety risk. They also need to know exactly how the ordinance will work. Many residents aren't aware we're contemplating allowing solar panels and arrays in neighborhood front yards, and of those who are aware, and we've heard from, they have been, there have been strong objections expressed, not objections to solar panels generally or even in residential areas, but objections to having them in front yards. This is a big deal that I think needs a community conversation, a conversation that we've not yet had. Yes, I think there's no dispute that we all want to make progress on solar in Ann Arbor, I do too, but we have to do it right and in a way that's supported by our residents. Again, in terms of the postponement, which I'm not moving to do just yet, but I would, if we go that direction, I would like staff's input on how long it would take to conduct a public education and community engagement effort, at least at the level we had for ADUs, 90 days perhaps. I also believe we should use the extra time to look closer at the ordinance amendment that Planning Commission debated, and Massachusetts has, which says that the solar panels can't go in the front yard until it's demonstrated they won't work elsewhere on the property. Thanks.
Councilmember Westfall.
Thank you. Let me ask Mr. Leonard a couple more questions. Thank you. I want to make, would it be helpful for me if the discussion could focus on the known and unknown risks here? So it appears that ground-mounted solar has, is used in other communities, some allow them in front yards, some don't. It's always a concern when people bring up the possibility of harming children. Have you seen any, or gotten any indication that these structures are any more or less dangerous than any other building or garage, or something else that could go in that space?
I have not. I could look to see if any of those discussions were considered when other ground arrays were installed elsewhere in the city, but to my knowledge, I don't believe, you know, other than having to comply with the applicable building and electrical codes, I would presume that they'd be just as safe as any other project complying with those codes.
Okay. And was it discussed, too? It looks like the proposed height maximum is significantly shorter than every other community that was identified on this list. Some are 40, some are 16, and ours is 6 in terms of the front yard, which seems to be the concern here. Was there any feedback from folks in the Energy Commission or the sustainability community about, would that just effectively prohibit front yard installations?
There was a lot of discussion, both from the Planning Commission and Energy Commission regarding that standard. The height standard was put in, I think, from a community aesthetic and sort of streetscape consideration, so as to, it was sort of considered in the context of what fence height we would allow in front yards, for example, beyond the required front yard setback, where you could do up to a six-foot height. That seemed to be a reasonable benchmark to allow for solar structures in that front yard. yard at that same depth of 40 feet. During the joint working session with the energy commission, there was a fair amount of consideration about how that would really effectively minimize the likelihood of installation at that level, just because practically speaking, it would be less practical to install multiple panels and still meet that height requirement. Whereas if you could do it on the roof or in the rear yard, you could sort of stack more panels without consideration of that height. So so I hope that answers the question. There was conversation about it in that regard, and that that's sort of how it was arrived at.
Also, Councilmember, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Leonard, but I believe at the planning commission, energy commission joint session, it was determined that six feet would allow for two sets of panels to be stacked at an angle. So you'd get a double wall. And that's why, you know, six feet seemed to be the upper threshold of it still being effective use.
Good, thank you. And with regard to somebody choosing the front yard versus the side or rear, would there be any reason, if other options were available, that somebody would want them in their front yard? I guess this is a bit speculative, but.
That it's speculative. I think the factors that are going to guide placement are solar exposure, you know, your roof configuration. Based on the history, we've had such an infrequent occurrence of requests for permits in the front yard. Based on history, I would say that most people would probably not seek that as the first option. But again, this ordinance would clearly provide it as a possibility.
Okay. And just clarifying, the closest that the front edge of either the fence berm, wall, whatever is would be screening the panel, the closest it could be to the sidewalk is 40 feet.
The fence or the panels would have to be a minimum of 40 feet beyond the front property line. We do permit landscaping closer within that required front yard setback. So in theory, if you chose to do it with a landscape screening or berm, you might be able to bring the structure right up to the 40-feet line and accommodate the screening with it outside of the 40 feet closer to the property line. But yes, for a six-foot-tall fence or a wall, it would have to be beyond that line.
Okay. And if and if no action is taken to adopt this, for example, as written, the ordinance allows ground-mounted solar once the moratorium expires.
Yeah, because solar, ground-mounted solar aren't contemplated in our ordinance, they would be regulated as an accessory structure. So they would follow all the same requirements as an accessory structure.
So up to 21 feet.
Great, that's helpful. All right, thank you.
I have Ackerman Warpahowski Smith.
I'm happy to wait until other people go.
Warpahowski. Councilmember Warpahowski.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. A couple additional questions. Was there discussion about how installation of front yard ground-mounted solar would fit in with our historic districts?
There was. They'd still be that installation would be regulated by the historic district as any other accessory structure or changes to those properties. So they would be still subject to a certificate of appropriateness from the historic district commission. By history, I can tell you, most of those panels tend to in the historic district tend to be roof-mounted, often in the rear.
And in the Councilmember Ackerman discussed an issue of potential maximum size of panels based on the front yard beyond the 40-foot setback. Was there any discussion of putting an overall size cap for a front yard installation or home installation, or just using the six-foot buffer or the six-foot height limit as a de facto cap?
Could you repeat that question?
One of the concerns was an issue of scale. And was so was there a discussion of putting an overall cap on the ground-mounted solar shall not exceed 35% or X square feet?
Oh.
Whichever is less.
Thank you. No, the ways in which the ordinance was drafted to address that scale issue would be to limit it in height and to limit it in 35% coverage. That 35% coverage is being taken elsewhere out of the ordinance where we apply that to accessory structures in the required rear yard setback. In this case, we're applying it to that section that was actually outside of the required front yard setback. So we use that as a benchmark to regulate by 35% coverage and height. So no, no additional square footage cap.
And last question is on the screening. As Councilmember Ackerman said, the screening is for the sides or back. If it's for the front, would there be a need or value in low-level screening from between the ground and the bottom of the panel? Or is that space likely to be so small as to be immaterial?
There was a specific recognition that if the exposure for the panels to function, obviously, we don't want to require them to be screened so that they no longer function. Additionally, there was a lot of discussion about practically, you want to accommodate for snow loads. So if you bring panels, for example, right down to the ground, you can sometimes lose some effectiveness. So usually, they have to be up a little bit. I don't think there was any specific discussion about screening just that low level underneath a panel. I think there is generally recognized that for the purpose of them, keeping that as free and open as possible was probably the appropriate approach.
Okay, thank you. So that that satisfies me. I would only be in terms of the narrow issue of this proposed ordinance, I would only be interested in a postponement. I'd only support postponement if we are very clear and specific what types of proposed language changes we're looking for in in this particular piece. If we wanted to look at a specific maximum size or some other specific change that we want to develop with the ordinance, if it's a broad, open-ended, let's drag this thing out, I wouldn't support that. I do think that there is value, and I wouldn't support it because I think it's good enough for now, and it's a better space to be in than either the existing zoning language that permits them as if they were an ordinary accessory structure, or the prohibitionist approach to say, we're just going to keep this in limbo and in a moratorium until we figure it all out. So I think this this is, if we've got a specific change, I'm happy to entertain that. But otherwise, I think this is a good next step. Regarding Councilmember Ackerman's desire to have a broader discussion about accessory units, accessory structures, I am open to that. I think that ends up being a very big discussion. When you look at the diversity of buildings, the diversity of lot configurations, setbacks, sizes, trying to figure out accessory dwelling units, different accessory dwelling units that work from the Old West Side to, you know, the some of the large lots that we have in, for example, Mrs. Leary who spoke earlier, you know, trying to figure out what makes sense across the city. There's a lot to have that full conversation, and I'm open for us to have that conversation. I don't want us to hold up this fix while we have that whole conversation. And before we get into it, I want us to make sure that we are thinking through the opportunity costs of diving into that. There are problems with our existing accessory structure unit. I get the calls from people who see a 20-foot-tall pole barn, go up in the, you know, neighborhood full of ranch-style homes, and they say, well, it feels out of scale. But that is not going to be a small project. You know, we started, we put the moratorium in place, thinking that this was going to be a small project, and it keeps snowballing bigger and bigger. So let's think through carefully what we add to our staff and our planning commission workload, and what the trade-offs of adding that, those new projects would be. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
I'd like to concur with much of what my colleague just said. Mr. Leonard, I do have a question. Roughly, how many parcels in the city does this impact?
I don't know.
I mean, I'm just thinking about the fifth ward. There are not a ton of lots with more than 40 feet between the sidewalk and the front of the house.
I mean, I can, I can tell you, when we were discussing this through the working process, we we don't have, I don't know the surveys, the front yard setbacks of every house in the city. So we we estimated that the percentage of properties that probably have a front yard greater than 40 feet are probably most frequent in a couple of neighborhoods. As you said, many of our historic neighborhoods are not going to meet this this standard. Many of our other, more recently developed neighborhoods are often built to the required front yard setback as well. So I don't know the number, but the combination of the percentage of lots that would meet this test, in addition to the percentage of those lots that are installing solar, in addition to the percentage of them that are going to choose to do front yard, I think it's going to be a pretty modest amount.
Do we have any front yard ground-mounted solar in the city? Do you, to the best of your knowledge?
No.
But three permits were pulled.
Yeah, one of those was converted to a, an attached installation. One, I haven't gone by to see if it was actually installed. It was proposed for, it was in the front yard because it was actually in a fenced-in backyard, but on a corner lot, and because it projected that meant front yard. And then another one that is not, that a permit that was applied last year. So I'm not aware of any installed in the front yard.
So I think, thank you very much for that. That's very helpful information. I think I would echo what Councilmember Warpahowski said, and I'm happy to move forward with this as a as a fix. I don't think that it needs the amount of attention that ADUs got, because I don't think it's nearly impacts as many properties. And I think, you know, I would, I would second the caution into jumping into the broader discussion of accessory structures in the city, simply because we have a lot of priorities. And, you know, that has not been one that has jumped up to the top of any list that's based on any conversations I've had with with lots of neighbors. So I think, you know, I'm going to second what Chuck said and say that I would only support postponement if it was very specific and very directed.
Councilmember Craple.
Thank you, Mayor. My question was actually asked by Councilmember Smith in terms of, you know, what is the impact actually? How many properties are we talking about, since even when we looked at ADUs, it wasn't every property in the city? But I would, I would echo your points. I think it just gets a start, I think, in postponement. I would, I'd only want some very specific language. What are we actually trying to accomplish if we're going to postpone this? And I would agree that discussions of accessory structure, I think that's an outside discussion that can be, I think, can get very big very quick, the one that I think we should look to have at some time in the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Lumm.
Thank you very much. With respect to the postponement, and I'm about to head in that direction, given what I'm hearing, the, you know, and I've heard, you know, we need to respect the demands on our staff. I get all that, and I agree. But, you know, quite honestly, we work for the neighborhoods and our residents, and that's, that's job one. And in trying to answer your question about you need to know what the specific recommendations are going to be in order to accept a postponement, that's an impossible question to ask, because we haven't talked to the, to our residents in neighborhoods. Mr. Leonard, how long would it take to conduct public education and community engagement, community engagement effort, at least at the level that we had for ADUs? I think maybe 90 days?
I'd guess 60 to 90 days.
Thank you. I will probably move to postpone this for 90 days. The, and I hope you just accept that the reason is to find out what our community would be recommending. I do know, I had asked a month or so ago, when this first came up, what, if the city could provide a map of the areas that would be the most impacted, city could not. But Councilmember Ackerman, you know, very forthrightly and honestly answered that question for me. And let's face it, I know the second ward will be impacted significantly. And I also why I would like you all to respect and provide that opportunity for us to hear from these neighborhoods that don't even know that this is being, this is that, that, you know, that this is unfolding. I mean, I've sent out information, but we haven't had any neighborhood meetings. So I think that's imperative that we, that we proceed down that path. It was, I do have another question for you, Mr. Leonard. Questions were asked about.
Councilmember Lumm, I'm sorry, since you pivoted to Mr. Leonard, I did not get a second on your postponement.
I haven't actually postponed yet. I said, but I'm headed that direction.
All right, my apologies.
Just a question about, because it was stated by the speaker tonight, these are not accessory buildings. And I do recall, a number of you were not here when the University of Michigan built the large solar array on Plymouth Road. My colleague is smiling because, yeah, that popped up out of thin air. And, Mr. Leonard, you were not city staff at the time either. And your predecessor at the time indicated to the university, and we had some meetings with the university, it was after the fact, unfortunately, but that these were not accessory buildings, the solar ray panels. And I, to the question of what the safety questions that were raised, I think you indicated a level of comfort with these structures and that they don't pose a safety hazard. And I would like some clarity on that, because anyone who drives along Plymouth Road, there are danger signs, you know, stretching the length on all the panels, warning people who are walking on the sidewalk that they're not to get anywhere near this array, because it is unsafe. So how do we, how could we possibly conclude that safety is not a concern? Obviously, the university did.
Well, I'm not concluding that safety is not a concern. My only response to it is that the way we're addressing that is by ensuring that it's no closer than 40 feet from the public right-of-way, which I think is pretty, a greater dimension than those panels are against the right-of-way along Plymouth Road, making sure that they're installed properly. But that, you know, I'm not professing to be an expert on the potential, you know, ways that they can fail. But I think the circumstance will be different in that there'll be a greater separation from the public right-of-way to the panels in any circumstance like this in which they'd be installed.
Thank you.
And then as just as to the accessory structure, the reason that they're regulated in that regard is that the way our ordinance applies is defining accessory structures is it's essentially any combination of materials used for something. That's a structure. It can be above ground, it can be below ground. And in the absence of ground-mounted solar defined in our ordinances, that's where, that's the definition that's going to imply, and that's where that regulation comes from.
Okay, thanks. So obviously, I think we need to engage the community before we move forward on this. And I would like to move to postpone for 90 days.
The second meeting in January, our clerk tells me.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
Is there a second?
Just quickly, as a point of order, if a motion to postpone fails, can a different motion to postpone be presented?
Sure. As far as I can tell. Second by Councilmember Lumm. Discussion to postpone, and Councilmember.
It's sometimes hard to follow, sure.
Councilor Reed. Seconded. Councilmember Lumm, you still have the floor.
I think I said it all.
All right. Discussion of the postponement. Councilmember Eaton.
I would support this motion because it's narrowly focused on obtaining input from residents about this, this, this small area. I would not want to seek a postponement for a fuller discussion of all accessory structures. I think that this is narrow and focused, and I think that it's, it's necessary to actually go out and engage the community before we do this. Thank you.
Councilmember Ackerman.
Thank you. I'm a little bit hesitant for a 90-day postponement for a few reasons. One is that our second moratorium is for 180 days, and that was already passed two weeks ago. So we're, you know, pushing some limits there. Second is, when we had this whole community engagement process around accessory dwelling units, there was an actual financial cost associated with it as well. We contracted with the county to do a lot of that work on our behalf. Obviously, city staff was involved. But, you know, there were also, you know, we were paying a consulting planning manager, and we were, we were paying the county, and I just, we're getting into dangerous territory if we want to do something of that scale and scope. I think that's pushing resources. And I don't know as if we want to allocate more to this conversation. conversation. But also, I think that we are capable of seeking that input from our constituents and having that discussion at this table. But, I would also appreciate more time to figure out specific ways in which we can mitigate some of these concerns if this is gonna move forward. Again, I, it's not my intention to see it go that direction, but 90 days, I think, is pushing it, and I think asking that much of staff without allocating other resources like we did with accessory dwelling units would be difficult. Additionally, just some clarification around, just 'cause accessory dwelling units are being used as a corollary a couple times now, accessory dwelling units are not allowed in front yards. They're only in rear and inside. So, this is a, you know, its own beast in many ways.
Councilman Grant.
Thank you. I do share those concerns about resources, and do have a question for Mr. Leonard. Apologies, it's related to the postponement, because it's about my feelings about it, and I couldn't get the question earlier. So, I'm trying to understand how we went from the elegant removal solution of nonward from the ordinance to something so completely different. If this impacts only a certain percentage of households in the city, why wouldn't we go the route of just doing something like a variance if you wanted this? So, when my neighbors built an addition on their house, I was on council, so I actually couldn't get permission, but my husband gave permission for them to do this. Why didn't we go in that direction where neighbors could either say yes or no? I can see neighborhoods where this could definitely work really well. In this particular neighborhood, it was not received warmly, but in others, it might. And I personally feel very conflicted. I feel like if we want solar, sometimes you have to see solar. But, at the same time, I don't want to see it work against our goals of promoting solar in the city, and feel like it could definitely go in this direction. So, what, I'm trying to understand the history here, and a little bit of why we came to this place.
Sure. As Councilmember Ackerman indicated, we had started with an amendment to the accessory structures ordinance, which would not only prohibit ground-mounted solar in the front, in the front yard behind 40 feet, but it would also prohibit any accessory structure in the front yard, period. And, I think for a lot of the reasons that Councilmember Warbowski indicated, the planning commission, I think, felt, and I think they use this term, that that was kind of a blunt amendment for a more, potentially a more specific matter. And so, because of, I think, some of the, perhaps the same intimidation about the diversity of lots and configurations of properties throughout the city, and, and trying to address, trying to understand how that change to the all accessory structures might impact properties, thought a more tailored solar, ground-mounted solar was the way to go at this time. It was obviously very consistent with what was requested in the moratorium as well. And then, really, again, tried to find a balance of the city's goals for looking for as much solar-ready and solar energy as we possibly can, while trying to hear some of the concerns about neighborhood impact. And, so that was the evolution, arriving at very much no change to the opportunity for ground-mounted solar in the rear yard from what it would be regulated now, severely restricting, further restricting how they would be regulated as accessory structures in the front yard now than what they would be if we just didn't make any change and continue to regulate them in that way.
Okay. Thank you. I just, from my perspective, I feel like this is a, it just, it just missed the mark a little bit, this ordinance, so, which doesn't have anything to do with postponement, but, but it, I don't think this is an issue that we need to put a lot of staff resources into. I would feel comfortable going, you know, a short period of time for councilmembers to gather input from their neighbors, and we'll support that, but I feel like this is something that could actually be pretty easily solved.
Mr. Lazarus in Lum.
I just had a question for council, because to go through another 90-day public review period is a substantial commitment on Mr. Leonard and his staff. So, if council chooses to go down that path, I'd also like to understand, what's the end result look like? What's, what is it that you're trying to get him to come back with, and his staff to come back with, so 90 days from now, we're not having the same discussion again?
Councilmember Lum.
Thank you. I think I can, I'll try to take a stab at that, at answering that. First, you know, in terms of the question of resources, you know, we, the city hosts many community meetings where we don't actually, we aren't asked to allocate funds. Recently, you know, we had an economic summit that, and we retained a consultant for that work. And, that, the council never received a contract for those consulting services or to conduct that summit, but it, it occurred, and I, you know, it was great work. I don't see this as monumental an undertaking as that, where we engage a consultant, and again, somehow that didn't require, you know, councils approving that consulting service assistance, or to conduct the, those meetings. And, and lots of materials were generated in support of, of that, we called it a summit meeting. Again, I'm not, the work was excellent, and somehow it occurred. In this case, I'm talking about a couple of community meetings, and I think it's better, yeah, I, you know, I spend a lot of time talking to residents right now, and it's hugely valuable. But there's nothing like having a community meeting where other folks can also hear from their neighbors. I, you know, we conduct meetings, and when we have meetings where people are just directed to go to, say, a station, and to talk to an individual one-on-one, I don't think, in general, people find that as rewarding as they do when they're in a setting with other neighbors, other people, and they can hear what other people's concerns are, react to those concerns, and provide their input. And I think, so, you know, a couple of well-organized neighborhood meetings, I don't see why that's suddenly such a big deal, frankly. And, I wouldn't think that would cost a whole lot of money, when relatively speaking, to other kinds of meetings that we do routinely. So, we beg your indulgence on that, and...
My question really, though, is, in order to satisfy the discussion, to be, what is it that you hope to get out of that process? I'm not gonna...
What is the, I'm sorry?
What is it that you hope to get out of the process? What work product would we bring back that could help?
Community feedback to guide, to guide, you call it a work product, to guide this ordinance. We, I said again, you know, you don't need me to repeat, but that we, you know, this, you know, this is something that's going to affect a lot of, well, war II certainly, homeowners, and I, you know, I know the interest would be high, and people just don't know about it. We haven't had the level of outreach with this, we, that we typically have on something like this, and I think that's critical. I mean, I'm starting to feel like a lot of neighborhoods are under attack, and if we don't, if we don't engage the community, the neighborhoods, and reach out and provide them information, and make that effort, shame on us. I'm sorry, this is, I just, I can't even believe that we're, oh, you know, struggling with this.
I'm not disputing the need to engage with neighborhoods and communities who are struggling with, is trying to understand what additional information we could provide that we already haven't done.
I don't have a crystal ball, and none of us do, until we act, until we present this information to the community and get that kind of feedback.
Mr. Mayor. Westphal and Eaton.
Thank you. Let me ask Mr. Leonard a follow-up question, please. Getting a workout tonight. So, Councilmember Warbowski, I think, brought up a reasonable question about scope, and while everybody's concerned about changes, excuse me, actually, this is a greater restriction, I suppose, everybody's concerned about any kind of modification to ordinance. Can you remind us about some of the things that are allowed, what kind of accessory structures, and to what height are allowed beyond the 40-foot line?
Place structures, garages, sheds.
Decks.
Deck.
Gazebos.
Gazebos, treehouses.
Like a pole barn, for example?
A pole barn.
Okay. At what height, say, in a R1A?
I'd say 21 feet.
21 feet, so...
Aircraft hangar.
Aircraft hangars. So, if, so I, you know, I, so if there's an extended public comment period, I guess the question, one question I might have for a resident is, you know, do you, how impactful do you think a six-foot screened solar panel would be in a, you know, in a front open space? And people might have certain feelings about that, to which one could reasonably follow up and say, well, what about a, you know, 20-foot pole barn in that same spot? You know, so I, and I haven't heard an outpouring of problems with, with those types of structures. So, I just, you know, if we're going to ask people to volunteer time, I guess, you know, and this is a, is a demonstrable problem, I think, I don't know, it seems like we're claiming that solar panels are several times more ugly than pole barns at four times the height. I'm struggling with dedicating a public process to something this limited, when there could be other possibilities that are worse. I guess that's, that's my struggle here.
Let me, let me suggest this, if I can just step in. For my part, this, we've already had one moratorium on this, so it's been the topic of conversation here at the table. We've already had, I think that moratorium has already been re-upped, so it has been the subject of conversation already here at the table. That said, to my knowledge, there have been no neighborhood meetings on the subject, and I don't think a neighborhood meeting is objectionable to, to most anyone. So, let me suggest that we do this, that we have the postponement, which runs to, well, will have, runs the date, to the January, the 2nd January. Our expectation will be that staff will run, you know, three public meetings throughout the community, they will, you know, deliver a report to us on the, on that, on the findings of that community, of those various community meetings. It will not be an elaborate, you know, survey, you know, push survey. If you come to the meeting, you'll have comments, you'll deliver them to staff, staff will deliver the comments to us. That strikes me as a middle ground here of sorts. If we can, I'm seeing nods from staff as to that being within the realm of the fairly, fairly doable, let's perhaps proceed with the conversation about the postponement, if we need to proceed with the conversation about the postponement, with that as the basis for the feedback. Councilwoman Eaton.
I agree. In response to the city administrator's question, what, what do we want during this period of time? I would like an opportunity for residents to express their concerns, for those concerns to be considered by staff, and either have alterations made to the ordinance to accommodate those concerns, or at least a response to us, so we understand how those concerns either are without merit or have been accommodated. And so, I think that's pretty much what you're saying.
Excellent. Perhaps we can move on.
Very quickly.
I, actually, Frenzla, to my knowledge, has not yet, has not yet spoken, so...
Singularly on the...
Say it now, brother.
Singularly on the postponement, I feel uncomfortable postponing when we're, we're moving from a state of, you're allowed to do this, to you're allowed to do this, but, slightly different. That, that, that looks like bureaucracy to me.
Ackerman, Lum, quickly.
Yeah, very quickly, on the postponement.
If I may.
Yeah, of course. And specifically, on the report back, if concerns of residents are voiced that they don't want to see solar panels in front yards, period, I would like that to be expressed just as equally as trying to mitigate concerns.
You were put, and on the report back as well, if it's clear what the, that there are defined recommendations to change, the ordinance is proposed, that staff can provide guidance, and further guidance on the needed language, so that when this does come back, we can incorporate those changes in, in the, in any upcoming revisions, and proposed ordinances. And thank you for your leadership on this, Mr. Mayor.
Great. For the discussion of the postponement.
I appreciate the, the conversation and the guidance, it was what we're looking for, and...
Thanks for pushing us forward.
Yep.
All in favor of the postponement?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It is postponed. Let's take a short break. Please. Councilmembers, back at the table, please. Thank you. We are back after a short break. We have a motion, please, to take C three from the table, moved by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Frenzel. Discussion of the motion.
Yes, thank you. I apologize for my faux pas earlier. My packet had something else as C three, so my own technological mistake there.
Perhaps we can, fair enough. Let's see if perhaps there's no further discussion of the motion to take it off the table.
Perfect.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? With eleven council members present, all voting in the affirmative, it is, C three is off the table. C three, an ordinance to amend Chapter seven of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor by repealing Chapter ninety-five, medical marijuana licenses for medical marijuana dispensaries of Title seven of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor, and by adding a new Chapter ninety-six, medical marijuana facilities to Title seven of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor, moved by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Frenzel. Discussion, please, of C three. Councilmember Smith.
As you'll recall, we brought this forward in July, after the Medical Marijuana Licensing Ordinance Committee spent several months draft, working with the attorney's office to draft language that would be consistent with the evolving state regulations. Being that the state has set a timeframe of December fifteenth, by which they promised to have their organization ready to go, they have a two-tier licensing process. Part of that is that anybody, any dispensary that is going to apply for a state license must have gone through the city licensing process, and a copy of that city's ordinance must be supplied to the state. Being that we have this, the licensing ordinance ready right now, we believe it's prudent to not only bring this forward to first reading here this evening, and not wait the couple of weeks that it'll take to get the zoning aspect completed. We think it's prudent for a number of reasons, one of which is to express our support to our, both our local businesses and our local patients, to show that we, we do support medical marijuana, that we are interested in continuing to permit these uses in the City of Ann Arbor, and that we are organized so that our, our providers can go through the state process as quickly as possible. That's the reason for bringing this off the table this evening and having this first reading.
Further discussion? Councilmember Frenzel.
The only addition, Councilmember Smith covered all of my main points. The only addition that I wanted to provide is that, you know, there's some questions about how the state implementation's going to happen, and that's been in flux for a few weeks here. And I just wanted to make sure that we're setting a goalpost for our local businesses, so that they know what they can, what they'll need to respond to in the city regulation, so that they can respond more directly to the state when need be.
Councilmember Ackerman.
Very quickly, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I misunderstood Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Frenzel's intentions to have this be a first reading, so people can disregard my council commentary, but I do still anticipate Planning Commission voting through the regulations tomorrow, so that we'll have some planning, excuse me, some zoning language in front of us in November. Although, no promises.
Further discussion? For my part, I'm delighted to move this forward. You know, I think that, you know, medical marijuana has, you know, become a part of, part of the business structure and part of the, the patient structure here in Ann Arbor. I think it's important that that remain undisrupted, and that we've, that we do our part to get this licensed regime up and off the ground, so that, so that nothing that the state does, well, I shouldn't say nothing that the state does, so that what we currently understand the state to contemplate be doing, that that does not stand in the way of the, the ordinary course of business, an ordinary course of treatment. Further discussion of C three. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is approved. DC one, resolution establishing the preservation and fulfillment of state funding obligations to municipalities as a City of Ann Arbor legislative policy priority, moved by Councilmember Lum, seconded by Councilmember Smith. Discussion, please, of DC one. Councilmember Lum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Lazarus, for your help in drafting this resolution. Briefly, a bit of background on the resolution. As you know, the state has an obligation to provide funding for fire protection to those Michigan cities where there is a public university. Historically, the state has not provided enough funding to cover the full cost. While we've continued to lobby the state to increase the funding, that has not happened. In our case, the state has provided Ann Arbor about nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year for several years now. Recently, we were notified by our lobbying firm that there were legislative changes in Lansing being considered that would eliminate some of the fees in the motor vehicle code. That's relevant, because it's those fees that provide the revenue for the state's fire protection fund and the fire protection grants to university cities. Anyway, what this resolution does is to add to the city's legislative policy agenda the specific issue of funding for fire protection. The resolution also directs the city administrator to communicate to Lansing and our legislators the city's position that these state fire protection grants should be protected, and that Governor Snyder should recommend full funding for fire protection in his February 2018 budget proposal. Mr. Lazarus, or anyone else in the Legislative Policy Agenda Committee, please chime in and add anything you think I've missed on this. The shortfall in funding from the state is a longstanding issue for Ann Arbor, and hopefully we'll all agree it's an issue we need to keep on the radar screen and pass this resolution tonight. Thanks.
Further discussion of DC one. Councilmember Ackerman.
Yeah, I think two years ago, a resolution very similar to this was actually my first resolution as a sponsor, and it's really disappointing that we have to ask the state once again to do their job and help us fund the safety of our residents.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is approved. DC two, resolution to reject the determination of salaries for the mayor and city council members, approved by the Local Officers' Compensation Commission on October eleventh, 2017, moved by Councilmember Eaton, seconded by Councilwoman Calisopathy. Discussion, please, of DC two. Councilmember Eaton.
Thank you. When our city charter was first adapted in 1956, city council members were not to be paid. There's no requirement that we be paid. There's no requirement that we receive a annual cost of living adjustment. And so I think that it's important for us to bring this forward, and not just let this raise go into effect automatically. Our compensation isn't based on the hours of work that we perform, or the quality of work that we perform, but rather it's to reimburse us, basically, for the cost of performing our tasks. And I've found that our, our compensation does pretty much cover the cost of traveling to and from meetings and those incidental expenses that you incur as a council member. So for me, it's really a question of whether we deserve a raise. I would say that city employees should get raises, so they keep up with the cost of living, because that is their living. This is just a stifle for us. Over the last year or so, we, on occasion, we've done things that haven't really pleased our constituents. For example, the issue of transparency. When the train station FOIA was denied, we had an opportunity to release that material anyways, and we declined. The issue of responsiveness to voter concerns. The library lot petitions fell short of the number of signatures they needed, and we were given the opportunity to put that on the ballot anyways, because a sufficient number of people in town had voiced that concern, but we declined. And so tonight, we have the opportunity to raise our own pay, and I think we should similarly decline. That's all I have.
Further discussion? Councilmember Ackerman.
I'll support this, simply because I would do this job for free. The fact that it has a small salary associated with it isn't part of the job. I don't want to tie it to how we vote on policy issues. Those are, you know, products of our conscience, products from, input from constituents, and products of talking to experts and looking at data. I don't think votes, one way or another, should deserve a raise, or, you know, the opposite. I think that's dangerous territory, but I do appreciate you pointing this out, and gladly vote to support it, but not for the reasons you stated, and not for the reasons of my votes.
Councilman Grant.
Thank you. I am not supporting this. We have a process that we go through. We ask residents who are volunteers to volunteer their time and efforts, and come forward, and take time, and they do studies, and they write us reports, and they say, this is why we've made this determination. So to throw that back at them, to me, is personally insulting to the work that, that they do. I'm even more insulted by the idea that because votes don't go your way, that that, that means that you think we're not doing a good job as a council. That's, that does not sit well with me either, but that's not why I won't be supporting this. I'm not supporting it, because if, if it's our job as a council, I know we're going to be looking at this. We talked about this in the Administrative Committee today, that, you know, we have someone who's now working on boards and commissions, and looking at ways to consolidate, or looking at if, if our boards are not doing a service that we find valuable as a council, then we shouldn't be asking people to volunteer their time. That's just, it's just not right. And so for that reason, I've always decided if they had said that we would get, we should get paid less, I would support that decision as well.
Further discussion of DC two. Councilmember Westfall.
Thank you. Local government forums are something that I take a lot of interest in, and the differences between council manager and strong mayor, and the staffing and salary implications that go along with those. And when this was brought up, I was all excited that we were going to have an interesting policy discussion about our, our strain from, you know, our, our pure roots as, as, you know, council manager community, but I see that this is about something different. So I'm, you know, I am supportive of our Local Officers' Compensation Commission. I, I don't know if any of the folks supporting this resolution had gotten feedback, or directed feedback to the LOCC. Somebody contacted me about it, and I asked them to submit feedback to that board. So, you know, it's not, it's not a big amount either way, at the end of the game, but I would like to hear what people think about the process of having a compensation board, and if that's working for us, or if we should change it.
Further discussion? Councilmember Lum. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Councilwoman Eaton.
Just in response to that, state law requires us to have a Local Officer Compensation Committee, and so they're doing the work that the law sets up for them to do. And similarly, that law allows us to decline the, the raise that they offer us, or, you know, whatever.
Further discussion? Councilmember Lum.
I'd say I've always had mixed feelings about these mayor council pay raises, and actually feel a bit differently about the mayor than I do about council members' salaries. I, the mayor's position is much more time-consuming, and while the different salary levels reflect that, it also suggests that the mayor's salary should be treated more like a full-time position, which means looking at annual adjustments and that sort of thing. A council member's salary is never intended to be reflective of a full-time position, but rather some compensation to recognize the effort. Annual assessments don't seem appropriate for council members. What, what seems more appropriate to me is just assessing what's reasonable. In this case, the cost impact is negligible. It's about thirteen thousand over the two years. But that's not particularly relevant. I mean, every dollar counts, but this is about what's reasonable, I guess, and I do think existing salary levels are reasonable. I appreciate that Councilmember Ackerman said he'd do this job for free. I think, for no compensation, I think, you know, we wouldn't be here if we, we didn't share that perspective and sentiment. that perspective and sentiment. So, I certainly, I could support this resolution. I do appreciate that the Local Officers' Compensation Committee was doing their job, you know, and that ideally, you know, maybe we should have had part of this discussion before they went off and did that work, but, you know, that's academic now. But I, and then there's also always the argument when this comes up, that we shouldn't be discouraging folks from participating because of their income levels and, you know, and then there's that side too, that not increase, not ever increasing the compensation could do that. So, you know, I understand where people come at this on both sides. I will just say that.
Councilmember Frenzel?
I too was excited to have a deeper conversation than what we're having on this topic. I'd be happy to reduce our compensation or have it or remove it completely. Looking at the people that are on the table and the folks that generally run for council, that the dollar amount doesn't matter. The thing that I'm most frustrated with is the allocation of time and resources that it takes to get to the table and that it takes to be at the table and the misrepresentation of our community that that creates. It's not about the compensation at all. And I think that gets back to Mr. Westfall's, Councilmember Westfall's comments directly, at least in my experience. So, I'm happy to support this symbolic measure.
Further discussion? Councilmember Warpawski?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I will be voting against this resolution in part because I think, in large part because I think the methodology by the Local Officers' Compensation Committee is a sound methodology. The proposed raise is less than is being offered to our staff. It's an appropriate reflection of the changing cost of living and less than we're giving to other parts of the organization. In terms of this broader question, I would not be able to do this job or I would be able to do only a shadow of it were it not for the stipend that's present. You know, the challenges of having a day job, a family, and the many hours that go into this job, it would not be, I would not be able to do this job well had I not been able to reduce my hours at my day job to give the attention to this job that is necessary. The stipend is an important part of being able to attract some of us to say, "Okay, fine, it's a pay, it's a cut in pay, it's an increase in hours, I'm willing to take that sacrifice because I care about the community, but it's what makes the numbers work for my household." I think if we start saying we want people to give 20-plus hours a week plus campaign season to this job without compensation, as some people have said they'd be willing to do, I, you know, hats off to you for you being willing to make that sacrifice, but I think it further narrows the pool of people who are willing and able, who would be able to serve our community in this function. So, I think being able to compensate people for the hours they're putting in, help them make the adjustments to their financial picture that serving on this council takes for many of us, is an important part of, part of the work. I don't think our compensation should be so high that anybody says, "Oh, I'm going to do it for the money." It's not a lot of money. But I do think it should be enough that when people look at the job and look at what it's going to take for their, from their day jobs, from their other parts of their community, they say, "It's a sacrifice, but I love our community, so I can make the sacrifice work with this level of compensation." I think the numbers put forward by the L.O.C.C. do that.
Further discussion? Councilmember Ackerman?
Very quickly, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I completely acknowledge that if you look at any American, the people with the most leisure time are young white males, and I'm fortunate to be able to spend my leisure time doing this instead. And I don't disrespect anyone who, you know, depends on this stipend or their family depends on this stipend, and so would never disrespect anyone for their vote in that manner.
Further discussion? For my part, when I nominated most of the people for this committee, if I recollect, based upon communications and recommendations from council members at that time, it was my statement then and is my statement now that I will do whatever, I will vote to confirm whatever they say. That is to say, if it had been a reduction, I would vote to confirm it. If it's an increase, I'll vote to confirm it. We ask the commission to do important work, important work for the city, and I believe accepting their judgment honors that work, and that's what I'm going to do. Further discussion? Councilmember Westfall?
Even though this topic excites me, I promise this will be my last comment on this. I want to echo Councilmember Warpawski's observation about an appropriate window, and I think this also goes to Mayor Taylor's comment about using this commission for recommendations. If there's a time when, for instance, during a recent campaign season, we heard questions about, does somebody have the time to fulfill their duties as mayor, for example? That starts to, if we start hearing that, I think that sends a signal that, I don't know, it sends a signal. We are supposed to be, you know, a non-professional board. On the other hand, to, on the other, on the flip side, there is a concern that this is a demanding job if you respond to constituents and dedicate the time necessary. It takes resources. For many of us, it takes thousands of dollars in babysitting at times. So, this is, I appreciate both sides, and I agree with Mayor Taylor about respecting and others about respecting the decisions of the L.O.C.C.
Further discussion? Roll call vote, and if you'll, starting with Councilmember Grant, and if you'll forgive me, I'll just remind folks that this is dealing with, this is a resolution to reject. So, the, a yes vote is to reject the proposal, a no vote is to accept the proposal. Roll call vote, please, starting with Councilmember Grant.
Councilmember Grant?
No.
Councilmember Ackerman?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
No.
Councilmember Eaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Crable?
No.
Councilmember Warpawski?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Calisopathy?
Yes.
Councilmember Frenzel?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
No.
Councilmember Lum?
Yes.
Motion fails.
D.C. 3, resolution to amend the 2017 council calendar, moved by Councilmember Crable, seconded by Councilmember Calisopathy. Discussion, please, of D.C. 3. Councilmember Crable?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is just to add a work session to our calendar on November 16th. It's a joint work session with the Human Rights Commission to basically do a review for the Hillard Heinz report that we're getting back.
Further discussion? Councilmember Ackerman?
Just a question, location? Is it going to be here, C.T.N.?
It's, please, it's C.T.N.
Okay, thank you.
It's the only space where we all can fit.
Last week, I went to the wrong location, so I just wanted to clarify.
Further discussion, please? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is approved. C.A. 11, resolution to authorize a professional services agreement with Wade Trim Associates, Inc. for project management and civil engineering services, estimated $2 million annual average, moved by Councilmember Eaton, seconded by Councilmember Ackerman. Discussion, please, of C.A. 11. Councilmember Smith?
Again, I ask this body to decide whether I should be recused from making, voting on this contract. As I mentioned before, I work for Wade Trim, 500-person, big engineering firm. This work is not performed by my group or in my office. While I know some of the individuals that are listed in the contract, I generally do not work with them. But it is up to you to vote to recuse me on this and to allow me to step out of the room while you discuss and vote.
Moved by Councilmember Eaton, seconded by Councilmember Ackerman. Discussion? I will say, I am happy to vote to authorize Councilmember Smith to stand down. I will observe, however, that other circumstances that, because essentially he has requested. But I am cognizant of the fact that others who have worked for entities that have been, appeared before us by way of example, the University of Michigan, have not made that similar request, and I believe that that, that failure to make that request was an honorable decision. I think it's, you know, perfectly fine to exclude Councilmember Smith is here. As represented, there is no financial connection between Councilmember Smith and this, this project, and so, I don't believe there to be a need to stand down. The request had been made. I'm happy to grant it. If the request had not been made, however, I would have thought that to be an honorable decision as well. Further discussion of C.A. 11?
No.
Oh, pardon me. Further discussion of that motion to stand down. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, you are excused. Further discussion of C.A. 11? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is approved. C.A. 16, resolution to approve amendment number one to contract with White Buffalo, Inc. for combined surgical sterilization and sharpshooting management services for the deer, city's deer population, in the amount of $35,940 in amendment, not to exceed a total of $205,940, and to amend the fiscal year 18 budget and appropriate necessary funds, the amount of $110,000. Moved by Councilmember Lum, seconded by Councilmember Westfall. Discussion, please, of C.A. 16. Councilmember Westfall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'll continue my question from earlier now that we have ample opportunity to discuss. So, there've been a couple of assertions, you know, tonight and at our last meeting about, one had to do with bullets crossing through private property without consent, and another one, excuse me, had to do with people with firearms crossing private property without consent. Are either of those being contemplated or would occur in some scenario?
Thank you for bringing that up. Excuse me, I've got a cough tonight. This topic is one with a lot of passion on, for views, but it's important to keep the facts of what the plan are clear and in the forefront. In this case, there are, there are no plans, and in fact, it is designed not to cross property lines unless there is previous property owner permission. So, the, if I may take a moment to describe the way that that works, if there is a private parcel, the vendor will have in advance obtained permission from the property owner. The neighboring property owners would be notified of this. They select a parcel, the vendor selects the parcel by looking at a number of important things for safety, but included in their safety protocol is, is a very specific area that they're going to work in, very specific. They know in advance where they will be shooting. They're not hunters who would move around a weapon and follow the deer. The deer are in the zone that they work or they're not. And so, I do not see that as a situation that would be happening, that they would be crossing lines unless they'd already gotten previous permission from a parcel owner.
Okay. And there was also a discussion about bow hunting. Is that contemplated for this season?
It is not.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Calisopathy?
Yeah, one other follow-up question. One other follow-up question. In the prior calls, when it was occurring in parks and natural areas, when the sharpshooters were shooting, they were shooting vertically down, so if they missed the deer, it was going to not go flying into another house or another neighborhood, right? Is the same practice of safety going to be done in private property as well, shooting only vertically down?
They use elevation as one of their key implements for designing how they will work, so yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
So, you know, I asked to have this called, and I'm under a little suspicion, a little suspense as to how this is going to turn out, but I just wanted to say a couple of things. And first off, I'd like to say that I, to my knowledge, I think it's important to note that throughout the country that I don't know if I have been notified of any call-related injuries. And I believe that when we do, when we do implement the call, that it will be done safely. I believe, everything that I've observed and told, that White Buffalo is staffed by professionals, that the shooting will be conducted within a pre-planned window, and strictly, if a deer outside of this window or not shot, or a deer inside the window or left the transit of the bullet that misses or passes through, the deer will go to ground. Now, this is all said and misunderstood, but I still believe that the discharge of firearms in the city for the purpose of killing deer affects people's sense of home. Thank you.
We should start over. Start over, seriously. You're okay with that?
Oh, no, that's all right. You know, it was beautiful, but it'll be ephemeral. It'll be something that just people in the hall remember.
So eloquent.
What I will say is that, that, well, thank you. I guess I will say broadly that I believe the call will be safe. I believe that we will conduct it in a safe manner. I believe that is the way the calls have been conducted to date. And I believe that White Buffalo is staffed by professionals and that the shooting will be conducted within a restricted, pre-planned window, that deer outside the window will not be shot, and that the transit of the bullet that misses or passes through will be to ground. And that said, and understood, that the discharge of firearms in our city for the purpose of killing deer affects people's sense of home, and that's, I believe, very important. We do not allow hunting in the city, and we do not allow the discharge of firearms in our city except under exigent circumstances. And I do not dispute the damages or harms associated with deer and the risk associated with deer. But for my part, they do outweigh the harm of shooting and killing in the town. I don't disparage those that disagree with me here or at the podium or in the community. I believe that on this matter, reasonable minds can and do differ. That we should have shooting and killing in our neighborhoods, in the end, it surprises and saddens me, but I understand that within this body, I'm in the minority in that. Again, I do not disparage, and maybe, in fact, maybe I'm not in the minority, maybe it's a saddened, saddened nevertheless, and it's just saddens others and it's just a cost-benefit evaluation. So, let me walk that one back. In the end, we give residents a good deal of control and input as to what happens in their neighborhood. We do this for zoning, we do this for site plans, we do this for traffic patterns and devices. We get neighborhood direction for playground placement and park design, and it seems to me that we should do the same for shooting. It is therefore my firm expectation that we will not shoot if we know of a resident who objects to shooting in adjacent parcels. You know, I believe that people ought to be secure in the knowledge that there won't be killing next door. We ask for their, their input in a wide variety of things, and in this context, it seems that the least, it seems that the least that we can do. So, I'll be, I'll be voting no on C.A. 16. Councilmember Lum?
Thank you for your thoughtful statement, Mr. Mayor. And before I share my thoughts, I'd just like to thank again Mr. Crawford and his team for their hard work in addressing this difficult deer overabundance issue. Staff have been professional, thorough, and objective throughout, and have reached out to and worked with all sides on this difficult and emotional issue, and that's sincerely appreciated. When we first started this, we knew it would take several years to address the problem. We also knew that deer populations grow rapidly in the absence of action. They double every two to three years, and that the problem would not go away on its own, it would only get worse. So, we adopted a four-year plan to begin to proactively address the problem. We're now planning for year three. What we thought when we started but didn't know for sure was that the deer were damaging the city's nature areas. Now, we know the browse damage is substantial. We've documented browse damage is at levels that threaten forest We've documented browse damage that is at levels that threaten forest regeneration and ecological balance. Experts tell us browse damage in excess of 15% threatens forest regeneration, and based on Dr. Corto's oak seedling study, we know the damage in all of the city's 12 nature areas are well above that 15%, with damage in half of the sites at levels greater than 60%. Protecting our nature areas and maintaining the ecological balance and diversity in our city should be reason enough for all of us to stay the course in our plan and to do it right. It certainly is for me. And there are other reasons beyond that to stay the course. We now know that in deer vehicle collisions, that deer vehicle collisions have increased, that lyme disease has been detected in Marshall County, and that the browse damage to private property has been significant and continues. Thanks to city staff's efforts, we now have solid data, and we have specific performance metrics and objectives on browse damage, collisions, and community education. And what city staff and the experts, including Dr. De Nicole of White Buffalo, are telling us now is that the plan they're proposing tonight is required to meet those objectives. They're telling us this is what it takes, and I believe we need to listen to them and support this tonight. If we don't take their advice tonight, if we don't do it right, I'm convinced we'll regret it later. We'll risk not meeting our objectives, including a sustainable level of browse damage that we need for forest regeneration and ecological balance. It will face a situation that gets worse and requires us to remove more deer and spend more money over time than if we accept the experts' recommendations tonight. No one wants to kill deer, and no one likes spending money to do it. It is a difficult and emotional challenge we face. But unless we are willing to just accept the ecological damage, it is a situation I don't think we really have much choice but to address, even at a cost I recognize is significant. And I don't think we can put a price tag on the potential environmental damage of not acting. Many, many experts have told us it would be environmentally irresponsible to ignore the problem. Most of council have agreed to this point, and I'd be surprised if this council decided to take that environmental risk. And if we are going to remain on the course we've set to address the problem, then we should listen to those same experts who are telling us now the plan they're proposing is the best way to proceed. I will be supporting this tonight and hope my colleagues will as well, with all due respect to you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for listening.
I've always said that I'm distinctly on the fence about this issue. This is my first opportunity to speak on it in public. My job is, and has been for a long time, and including being, working for the city government here, was to know that this was a significant ecological problem. We've known it for a long, long time. There are plenty of studies that show that ecological damage happens because of overherbivory. And it's significant. And it exacerbates a suite of other problems that are happening because of fragmentation, because of global warming. Those things are real. I also could have told you at that time, and certainly when this program was implemented, that we did not have the resources in-house to start or complete this project. And I think, truthfully, I think that we got ahead of the horse on this one and created more damage socially and in our community than should be permissed. That's exceptionally frustrating to me. Knowing that we could have prevented so much community ill will and not having done that is really, really frustrating to me. I talked to many, many residents who were duly afraid for their children's lives, and that is not the role of government in the United States. That it's not appropriate. That's our responsibility. And that makes me, makes me sad. And of course, those two things come in conflict with each other greatly. I was delighted and to be appeased of a lot of the concerns that our residents had over the course of the second year of implementation. Talking to a number of, talking to many, many residents who became more comfortable with more information, and the alterations that happened between year one and year two went a long way to making me more comfortable with this situation. I am, I am, again, frustrated to hear that the residents who had devoted their time and passion to our commissions on this matter feel frustrated and pushed out of that conversation. I think that we spent a lot of time moving towards ensuring that we had built some bridges, and so, pushing those away, I won't say lighting them on fire, but pushing them away to some degree, I feel like is a large waste of our, of our time and our social capital as an organization. So, I'm frustrated, and I understand, I appreciate why we're front-loading the work here on this, on this year, on year three, and to be able to potentially reduce it in year four, I understand that plan. But at the expense of social capital and political capital, I don't, that's exceptionally frustrating to me.
Councilmember Frenzel already said much of what I was going to say. If I, if I have a frustration and a concern, it's hearing from our residents who, whose staff worked so hard with to, to build bridges and to collaborate and, I know some didn't like the word compromise, but I, I feel that it is applicable in this situation. So, for those residents to feel blindsided by this, I do feel very badly about that. Certainly, the number, I think, is difficult for many, and I understand why. I also feel like if we want to get to the point where we don't have to do yearly calls, that this is a step that's, that's necessary to take. But process-wise, I certainly do feel very badly about the hurt that is in this room and that was expressed tonight. So, I will be supporting this because I think it is part of a four-year plan that we have, and front-loading the money does, does make sense. But I, but it is frustrating. I felt like we took such a step forward last year, and to take this step back, I hope that we don't repeat that in the future.
Further discussion? Councilmember Crable.
Thank you. I will be supporting this. I think we do have a problem with deer in the city, and we have to look at a way to try and start dealing with this. I think long-term, though, I think we're going to have, we're looking at a problem we're going to have dealing with wildlife in general within the city, not just deer. You know, there's other animals, wildlife, coming into the city, living in the city. At some point, we're going to need to look at how we address that and start looking at it more of a comprehensive view, and how we want to talk about it and how we're going to deal with it. And whether it's education of our residents not to have children feed the raccoons coming up to their house, or, you know, what, what's going to be the best process? Because I think what happens when you do get smaller mammals coming in, they are going to be attracted with coyotes, foxes, and other predators, they are going to come into the city and will become a problem in neighborhoods for people with cats and dogs and other things. So, I hope, hopefully, we can be looking at this and taking a long view and thinking about what's next and how are we going to manage wildlife in general since I think in Lansing, they've kind of taken a step back from that. DNR really doesn't get involved dealing too much with it in the cities, and I think it's going to be an issue we're going to have to deal with coming up. Thank you.
Councilmember Wapahowski.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. The strategy in this resolution of trying to get ahead of the problem and bring the future need for culling and future costs down is one that I support. I have to say, for me, from, for my continued support of this, we're going to need to get a handle on this. I'm supporting moving the funds from one year to another year, but this as an ongoing spending level is not, not one that I'm comfortable with, and I'm hopeful that this will help us get into a track where we, we treat the, we treat the issue aggressively, we try to get ahead of it, and then we're able to significantly scale down our costs in terms to bring us to a maintenance level that's much more financially sustainable. The trade-off, the financial trade-offs to spend at this level on an ongoing basis is beyond my comfort zone. But for one year to try to get out of it, I'm okay.
Further discussion? Councilmember Westfall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo my thanks to staff for continuing, keeping continuity on the team who's dealing with this and really spending a lot of time with outreach. I recognize this, even, even among some of my neighbors and friends, that it's a sensitive issue, and I respect the disagreement taking place. I personally share reservations about discharge of firearms in the city. I don't like guns, but this problem has not been dealt with humanely in any other community in other fashions. So, I support staff's findings, I support their research, and I support their diligence. It's true, we could let this issue get worse, and as other communities have, and then be forced to revisit it later at a much greater cost. And that's not something I'm willing to do. The damage, according to anyone who has studied this, is already present in our natural areas. I think it's our job to learn from this, learn from any process mistakes we may have made when we had a public discussion about this, and as we continue to have a public discussion about this. But I think we're under a similar obligation to keep moving forward. Thanks.
Further discussion? Well called, though, please start with Councilmember Grand.
Councilmember Grand?
Yes.
Councilmember Ackerman?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
No.
Councilmember Eaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Wapahowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Kowalski?
Yes.
Councilmember Frenzel?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Lum?
Yes.
Motion carried.
DB 1, resolution to approve DTE State Street Utility Substation Plan, Project Site Plan at 2551 South State Street. Moved by Councilmember Eaton, seconded by Councilmember Crable. Discussion, please, of DB 1. Councilmember Eaton.
So, DTE met with Councilmember Crable and I, a couple months ago, to discuss this project. And they pointed out that because we're a growing community, and because our community has problems with power blackouts, this is just a necessary improvement in the infrastructure for supplying power in our community. I'm glad that they have reached out and cooperated with both council and the community, and I look forward to the improvements this represents.
Councilmember Ackerman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly to do a little bit of background and ask one question of the petitioner, I promise just one. So, as Councilmember Eaton introduced, this is the replacement of a substation on South State Street to improve it and, and scale it to our growing community. It's two new transformers with two new central, excuse me, control centers. It's downgrade from State Street, so the height of 55 feet and then an extra 15 feet for lightning rods will be buffered by, by that grade. There's also going to be 12-foot walls for safety and aesthetics around the perimeter as well. It does back up to Bayless, the Ann Arbor Public Schools Administrative Building. And my one question is, at a planning commission meeting, we asked if you'd be willing to reach out to the public school system and see if you could collaborate on a piece of public art as part of the construction cost along with some students? And have you guys been able to reach out to?
Yes, we met with, my name is Dan Breaker again, with DTE Energy. We did meet with the Ann Arbor School staff, as well as the staff did go to the Ann Arbor District Council. We did talk to them about the wall and what our plan was, which is basically to have an eight-foot tall grass planted in front of that wall. They were amenable to the current plan. They did ask, coming out of the council meeting, that we ensure that no graffiti left, got on the wall or left on the wall, and that we kept the wall clean, and that was their request.
Yes, certainly, public art and murals being a fantastic way to prevent graffiti because it's going to get drawn on one way or the other, and I'd rather, you know, students be involved in the project than not. But, you know, eight feet of grass is hard to get through to spray paint, and if the public school district is amenable to having that in their backyard, then I'm glad you reached out, and thank you. My other item, and I think this is worth, worthy of note and hopefully addressed to some degree, is as part of these millions upon millions of dollars being invested in Ann Arbor, which I think we all appreciate after the crashes in March, and, and ratepayers certainly appreciate, you know, after paying their utilities bills, one aspect of it is overhaul of wiring heading into town down State Street and a continued length of construction for that project because of some regulations that we have in place in which DTE can only work on something to the effect of 200 to 300 feet at a time on State Street, which prolongs the, the construction along State for over 12 months. So, portions of State Street will be ripped up and closed for, is it 18 months? It's like a reunion. I missed you guys.
Not exactly, it's really the exact length. So, I'm bringing my project manager up. This is Prem Kavath, he's the project manager.
Hi. Twelve-month construction period, starting from December of this year, all the way to next, next November. So, we plan to do 200 feet at a time. We also look into opportunity to do both the ends, 200 feet here and 200 feet there. But the permit will explain how we can start the job, at what time, and how long we can do that. So, we have, if we have permit approval, based on that, we'll plan the job.
Thank you very much. And I don't think that's something that's worthy of a terrible amount of discussion right now, but something that staff should definitely be looking at offline, hopefully, in order to kind of mitigate the impact of those continuous closures for that 12-month period. If there's, you know, opportunity for us to weigh in as to, you know, how much road can be closed at a given time to, you know, decrease that timeline, happy to have that conversation, but something that the public should be aware of, that that's coming, but to all of our benefit in the long run, in terms of better and more consistent power supply.
Further discussion? Councilmember Wapahowski.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. As long as we have the DTE reps here, I'm going to go a little bit off and say I'm glad to see that we've got this investment in the transmission capacity. And while you're here, I'm also going to ask that you continue to pay attention to the maintenance of your transmission facilities in terms of line clearing and so forth. The summer before this, Councilmember Smith and I had our phones ringing off the hook with, when you had the repeated outages from your hemlock circuit. This, we saw several ones in Lakewood area near the Sister Lakes. I know you've been trying to catch up on some deferred maintenance, and I do appreciate that you have a lot of miles of transmission equipment to maintain, but from my perspective and from what I hear from my neighborhood, from my constituents, at times, it's matters of life and death. We have a resident in the 5th Ward who is a Holocaust survivor. He has sleep apnea. He needs a breathing device to help him stay, stay alive. And so, when the power goes out, it's a very significant concern for him. So, thank you for this investment in the infrastructure, and please continue to maintain and to speed up the deferred maintenance on the infrastructure that's already in place.
Further discussion? Councilmember Eaton?
I'm not worthy of Councilmember Eaton's name.
But if we're making requests, Elmwood between Packard and Oakwood could use some line clearance as well.
Perhaps we could, thank you very much. Further discussion on the motion.
On the motion, thanks, yeah.
Yeah.
This is oh-so tempting. I won't.
Like what you did.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is approved. DS 1, resolution to recommend approval of three-year professional services agreements for engineering services for parks and recreation with Smith Group, JJR, Inc., and Rowe Professional Services Company, not to exceed an annual amount of $150,000 for each firm. Moved by Councilmember Grand, seconded by Councilmember Eaton. Discussion, please, of DS 1. Councilmember Eaton.
So, I want to thank staff for bringing back a contract with this resolution and the next resolution. The city charter gives us the obligation of reviewing contracts, and I don't believe that we can review a contract that doesn't yet exist. So, having the contract- that we can review a contract that doesn't yet exist, so having the contract included in this is important to me. As an example of how a contract can kind of escape us, when we authorized staff to go forward and negotiate a contract for a real estate broker to sell the library lot, we did it in advance. The contract didn't come back for review. And I think that there are some clauses in that contract that we might have raised an eyebrow about had it come back for actual review, had we seen the contract. For example, that contract pays 3% of the total project value rather than a percentage of the sale price. It also has a failure clause in it where we pay $4,000 per month to the broker from its execution until it's terminated if the deal doesn't go through. So, that contract was approved about 36 months ago. Right now, if that contract was terminated this month, we would owe the broker $144,000, and we wouldn't have a project on the library lot. So, I think it's important for council to take seriously its charter role in reviewing contracts, and I appreciate that staff brought this back to us as a complete contract.
Further discussion? Councilmember Lum.
Thanks. I just would like to thank staff for providing this information, and I do think postponing it made sense. Thank you, Councilmember Eaton, for requesting postponement, just to get more detail on the terms of the agreements. I know you weren't objecting to pre-qualifying firms or suggesting every little project needed to be bid out, but that, when, you were saying that when the C does pre-qualify these firms for as needed work, we should see and approve the terms of those general agreements, and I agree with that. And so, thank you again for providing the four consulting agreements, because they do contain the appropriate information on scope, fees, insurance, et cetera, and I'm certainly comfortable moving forward. And then, once approved, parks and recreation go about their businesses' plans. So, thank you for, again, providing this helpful information so that we can exercise the appropriate oversight and do our due diligence.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's approved. DS 2, Resolution to Approve Three-Year Professional Services Agreements for Architectural Services for Parks and Recreation with Mitchell &amp; Mora Architects and Kohler Architects, not to exceed $150,000 per firm. Moved by Councilmember Grand, seconded by Councilmember Lum. Discussion, please, of DS 2. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's approved. Do we have communications today from our city attorney? No, Mayor. We have a force of clerk's support of communications, petitions, and referrals. May I have a motion, please, to approve the clerk's report? Moved by Councilmember Ackerman, seconded by Councilmember Westphal. Discussion, please, of the clerk's report. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The clerk's report is approved. We now come to public comment general time. To speak at public comment general time, one need not have signed up in advance. Speakers have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time clock. It's a matter of courtesy when they have only one person speaking at a time. And finally, if you require assistance in speaking before council, we'd be delighted to provide it to you. Is there anyone who'd like to speak at public comment?
Yes, my name is Ed Felpas. I wanted to speak to you about the station. This last week, there were four meetings on a proposal for the train station, and not that many Ann Arbor citizens were there. I think there were 10 people at three meetings and the fourth meeting. I think I counted 37 people, so that was well attended. This is because of the, the report from the feds is now out and available to us. The report says that the build-out, the total building on Fuller Park, which has a huge parking structure, would cost $81 million, millions. And on Depot Street, a build-out would cost $94 million, which includes a very strange remodeling, rebuilding of the Broadway Bridge. The feds, the feds would pay 80% of this, but that's not as wonderful as it sounds because we would still pay $16 million. I think in Ann Arbor, we don't go around talking in millions very often, and $16 million is quite a lot. In my thinking, where we are now, the station on Depot Street is handling trains every day. It could be improved. It has a, it has a small waiting room. There is space on two sides of the building, we could double the waiting room. We'll save a few thousand dollars. We wouldn't have to get into the mids. There also, you know, the ridership, and for our take, we have maybe ridership on our line. However, the ridership goes up and down. It seems to be sort of leveling off. But if and when the ridership will double or triple, and if and when the 10 trains that we've been told we will have on this line, if that ever develops, then I think this is time to talk about, to talk about these million-dollar kinds of construction. I think that would be 20 years, 30 years, 40. Anyway, the present plans by then would be out of date. Technology changes all the time, and so I'm sure that we would have to start over with new plans. Meanwhile, the station is working. Maybe we could soon share or buy some of the DTE land behind it to a different park, but I know we could very cheaply get a shuttle bus, pick up the passengers from the park, down the other side of the tracks, bring them over the bridge.
Thank you.
I think a cheap and easy solution would be very possible. I'm not comfortable talking these millions.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at public comment?
The IRS statement on the library lot makes me nervous. I'm all in favor of the library lot being built and stuff. I've said that before, but, and I understand there's kind of two lawyer sides to this. One is that it's boilerplate, the other lawyer side is that, hey, this is a concern. I almost wish that our other lawyer would chime in at some point, give a memo and say, hey, this is not a concern. But, you know, usually IRS calls you, they knock on your door and they say, hey, you know, pay us five bucks, and you're, by the way, you're okay, have a good day. This is more like, hey, you guys are okay, have a good day, but we're gonna keep an eye on something, and that makes me a bit nervous. So just make sure things are good. One thing that occurred to me is I almost wonder if the library lot vote should have happened, because then, if that vote happened, and I think the public would vote in favor of it, then you could always say that, hey, the public voted in favor of it, we're doing what the public wants. So anyway, just my thoughts on that. What I was gonna say about salaries, you guys don't get paid enough. I do, I do think about, I think about what you had just said, Warpahowski said, and I think about people who are less fortunate, you know, some of you guys have really good jobs, and you get paid well, and this is, this is, this is not a lot of money, but I could see other people who want to do this, and this, you know, this would give them some money that, you know, I think you need to get paid for it. And I think I was gonna say something else, but I think that's about it. Otherwise, have a good night.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at public comment?
Hi, my name's Ed Filmeddy. As usual, I'll speak to the oldest meeting minutes on the agenda, because you're used to hearing that from me. We didn't know the final meeting minutes from the previous local officers' compensation committee for two whole years, and I think it'd be great to get a draft out of what they actually went through and put that, you know, put that in a public place so that people could see what they, how they deliberated and what they considered. The question of compensation for part-time elected jobs is a really difficult one. I don't think we're a big enough city to warrant having 11 full-timers working to be our council, yet the relatively low wages paid would make it possible only for people who have either a very generous employer or the means to make such a commitment to serve. So I would wonder out loud whether the city could provide a form of compensation that would not be cash compensation, but that would be more in the form of benefits to people who are serving on council. I would imagine that you might greatly expand the number of people who would even consider a council run if they were to receive health insurance, for instance. And that might be a substantial incentive that would not cost much more than the cash involved, but that would provide a way of attracting people to the job. Again, I don't know what the actual laws are, so that might not actually be possible, but we can all dream. And, yeah, I guess that's about it. I don't have strong opinions over whether what you did to raise your own wages was a correct thing to do. It was not, it's not enormous sums of money even with the cost of living announcement allocation, but I think it's important that the C look to do things that draw people to this table and that allow a broad section of the community to look at running for office. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at public comment? Seeing no one, public comment is closed. Are there communications from council? Councilmember Ackerman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd love to direct the public to E1, under the city attorney's comments. This is a public advice memo from our bond counsel, Dykema, which again expresses that we are in compliance with our tax advantage status under both IRS and Treasury regulations. It's important to note that this is written on Dykema letterhead, and so carries the full weight of their professional advice and is so, in turn, covered by their professional insurance, which is for a lot more money than we're talking about in this bond. With that said, I think, I hope we can lay to rest the fact that this council and city staff have completed their fiduciary duty with respect to our parking lease and the sale of the air rights for the library lot to Core Spaces. I would hope that this council takes that advice seriously, and when leaders, be they elected or community or candidates, continue to point to this, it is doing so while misleading the public in a shame. So, thank you.
Further discussion? Councilmember Lum.
Just one general announcement, and Ann Arbor news has covered this well. The Ann Arbor Train Station, last day for written public comment is Thursday. This is on the Ann Arbor Train Station Environmental Assessment Report. Excuse me, the last day for written public comment is Thursday, November 2nd, so I would encourage anybody and everybody to provide your comments, and they can be made by email to Mr. Eli Cooper@ecuper@atugov.org. Thank you.
Further communications? Do we have a closed session today? No, Mayor. May I have a motion, please, to adjourn? Moved by Councilmember Westphal, seconded by Councilmember Lum. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed.